Calling the Board of Education to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, is there a second? In deference to Mr. Hansley, he says he has to leave about forty-five minutes, in about forty-five minutes, for a medical appointment. So I said, in case we don't finish A and B on number two, which is of special interest to Mr. Hansley, that we'll suspend talking about that until he returns. But we'll start with it, so that'll maybe help things a little bit. But with that explanation, is there, all those in favor of the approval of the agenda say aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Shannon, why don't you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation, under God, in the gospel, with the Lord Jesus Christ and justice for all.
Shannon?
I do think it'd be appropriate. We lost a very precious teacher up in the Northmore area, Mr. Billings, and also if at this time we just remember our friends out west, the western part of the state, they're just going through a horrific time, so if we'll just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, our first up is our budget resolution, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Board members. Mrs. Edmonds is gonna join us to present an overview of where we are with our original budget resolution that we're bringing to you today for your approval. You know, as you are aware as a board, our public's aware, you approve your preliminary budget resolution in April, which we then present to the county commissioners, and then based on where they came in with their budget with the funding formula, we then knew where we were from a local perspective, and then over the summer, through a couple mini budgets, we now know where we are with the state. Another impact to the original budget resolution that Ms. Edmonds will discuss is the state's funding model changed this year based on legislation to a funding in arrears model, based on where your student average day of membership was the previous year is how the state is funding you. With that, we did see an impact on the number of state teaching positions given to Moore County schools. So Ms. Edmonds is gonna hit on that, the impact that has on the original budget resolution. We did share this with the Budget Board, the Board Budget Finance and Audit Committee about a week ago, and it does come with the committee's recommendation for approval and mine as well. So, Ms. Edmonds, I'll turn it over to you to walk us through and review the same information we did with the committee. Thank you.
This is the updated projected fund balance appropriation for twenty-four, twenty-five. And if you will look, you have four columns. The first column was the Board of Per Budget, that was presented on April fifteenth. The second column shows the Board of Education Work Session on June third. The third column is our Board of Education Work Session for August fifth, and the last column is information based on actual state allotments and actual funding from the county. We really wanna focus on the last column, all the others are exactly the way they were. And then, if you see the red item, Funding in Arrears. So with Funding in Arrears, it is brand new this year, and with the Funding in Arrears, we lost approximately ten state-funded teaching positions. This is a new model that DPI is now allocating our allotments with, and it is the first time that they have implemented this. So this shift of losing ten state-funded teaching positions would be shifted to a local cost. So, if you notice, the fixed costs associated with projected state increases in salaries, retirement, and health insurance contribution rates, they did increase eight-hundred-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-two dollars. And that is directly the impact from those loss of those state-funded teaching positions that are now shifted over to local. For our local supplement, step increases for certified staff, those numbers never changed because those ten positions were already, local picked up those state teachers' supplements, so that did not change. Our other projected fixed cost increases, the five percent inflation did not change. Our projected charter school growth, based on the five-year inflation, did not change. The fund balance appropriation for twenty-three, twenty-four, re-incurring costs did not change. And then, our budget efficiencies did not change, making our total fixed cost four-million-five-hundred-fifty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-fifty-two dollars. The projected county appropriation funding formula, it did change on that last column. There's a little more information, we break it down in the next couple of slides, but it did go up by five-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-three dollars, the actual county appropriation. And then, our projected fund balance appropriation, because of the increase in our fixed costs for those ten teaching positions, less the increase from the county appropriation, it made our projected fund balance appropriation go up by two-hundred-ninety-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars to balance the budget. The difference in fixed costs, county appropriation, and fund balance appropriation, as you can see in the last column, that's the eight-hundred-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars related to those loss of ten state-funded teaching positions that have been transferred to local. And then, our projected county appropriation, the actual county appropriation, did go up by five-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-three dollars, and our projected fund balance appropriation went up by two-hundred-ninety-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. The difference in our estimated actual fixed costs, this is a breakdown of those loss of the ten funded teaching positions. So if you look at an average cost of teaching, teacher's salary in Moore County, it's about fifty-five thousand. With social security, retirement, and hospitalization, it makes, with benefits included, around eighty-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-four dollars, times ten positions, about eight-hundred-and-five-thousand. So that is a difference of just a little over eight-hundred-thousand dollars. And then, we look at our county appropriation. It did go up, so if you look at in the box in the middle, where it shows the change in county appropriation, for twenty-three, twenty-four, the thirty-eight and a half percent for current expense was thirty-seven-million-six-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-three dollars. And for twenty-four, twenty-five, it went up by one-million-three-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars to thirty-nine-million-fifty-four-thousand-five-hundred-ninety-five dollars. Back in twenty-three, twenty-four, they take away the capital outlay, the DHHS flow-through nursing, and then Sand Hill Center, making our total county appropriation thirty-six-million-five-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-three dollars. Then in twenty-four, twenty-five, the total, if you notice, the Sand Hill Center, it did go away, it was bought out by Trillium Health, and we no longer are receiving those funds. So that's an additional two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand that would come back to Moore County schools. So the total is the one-million-six-hundred-fifty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-two dollars difference. And then, the last slide, the change in county appropriation is the five-hundred-twenty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-three dollars. And then you have the eight-hundred-twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars in increased costs, making our increase in fund balance appropriation two-hundred-ninety-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. And where does that leave us with our projected fund balance? When we met the last time, it's the third column over, we ended our year at five-million-twenty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twelve dollars. The only thing that's changed, we did have auditors come in, and they've done our twenty-four audit, and there was a hundred-and-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars in assigned accounts receivable, that is called stabilization by state statute. And that does have to be assigned. So our actual unassigned fund balance after the twenty-four audit was four-million-nine-hundred-twenty-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Then we have our actual projected fund balance appropriation of two-million-eight-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and that leaves our updated twenty-four, twenty-five projected fund balance, two-million-twenty-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, which is slightly above that two-million-dollar floor. Any questions?
Questions by the board? Seeing none, I wanna, I've got a couple. Number one, we're talking about, everything we talked about is Fund Two, am I right?
That is correct.
Okay. We also have a Fund Eight. Oh, I'm sorry. What I said was, everything we've talked about is Fund Two, but we also have a Fund Eight. Okay. Fund Eight has what in it? Approximately, how many, how much money?
There's approximately nine million dollars.
Okay. Now, part, that is, some of that is segmented for special, for special projects, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's put aside, but there is a certain amount of money in there that is unassigned, am I right?
Yes, there is. Available unrestricted is six-million-nine-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-six dollars.
Now, this is an accounting question, and I know you know the answer to it, but I think the board needs to know, and I think the public needs to know. Why do we have six billion dollars in unassigned monies, and yet have a fund balance of only two million dollars in another account? Shouldn't that be about eight million dollars of available funds for whatever, I've no idea what, but for whatever?
They're not all, it is unrestricted, the six-million-nine-hundred-thirty-five-thousand, we do have reoccurring costs of about three-million-six-hundred-seventy-two-thousand, so really the available unrestricted is about three-million-two-hundred-sixty-three-thousand. The question that you have is of why is it separate? It is separate because the money that we receive is usually coming from some type of grants, or it is specific for certain items. We do have some items such as the Medicaid reimbursement, it does come in as a reimbursement, but it is typically in your Fund Eight throughout every school system.
Fund Eight is a fund, Mr. Levy, that is created for reimbursable restricted revenue that the school district gets, and so it goes into that Fund Eight. Each school district has that, like indirect costs, like Medicaid reimbursement or grant funds that we may receive, federal impact aid funds, things of that nature.
My just, my real confusion is that if we have three million dollars in recurring costs, which is year after year, it's coming out, why wouldn't that be part of the main Fund Two budget?
It's not guaranteed money, such as your local funds, you have money coming in from the county or from the state every year, but that is not guaranteed, you're gonna get the same amount, and it is money specifically for Moore County schools.
Okay. It's just, it's very confusing to me, but, you know, it's the way it's done, so I'm not gonna question it. But it's, but just to get the entire picture, as opposed to two million dollars, I see there being nine million dollars and six million dollars unrestricted, so, at the end of the year. So, a little bit different picture, which is what I see. Anything else?
Could you explain a little bit more where the auditors found what you said was restricted and shouldn't have been, or vice versa, please, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you.
On our draft for our financials, there was a hundred-and-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars that was considered accounts receivable and encumbrances, and it is restricted because the state statute requires it to be, it's not money that we've actually received yet. So it's actually, they hold that back until we receive it. So in other words, you can't spend it.
And one further thing, Dr. Locklear, can you explain a little bit more about this ten, loss of ten teachers, and how that impacts our budget, and why the state has all of a sudden lost ten teachers, and all of a sudden now we have to make that up in our local budgeting, which is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is a big chunk of money? So I think the public needs to know about that, and maybe the legislature needs to get on the ball here. Okay.
Well, it was based on, it was based on, in the last budget, the state legislature did now require that public school budgeting be done in funding and arrears. Up to this current budget year, the state budget was based on projections, based on the projected number of students that you would have in the next year. Moore County Schools has been fortunate to be flat or growing for several years, and so we've always received at least as much as we did the previous year, if not a little bit more. So that's been very helpful. This new model bases, based the funding on where you came in as a school district the previous year, and then if you grow, you can apply for additional funding. Based on that model that the state put out, we did lose ten teaching positions, and with that, we had to incur that cost into our local budget, which is what Tina was walking through with the need for additional fund balance allocation in the budget.
But we also grew in students. In other words, we didn't lose students, we actually gained students, but we still lost the teachers, am I correct on that?
Well, we are approximately eighty-five students up where we were last year on Day Twenty, which is one of the informational presentations today, and so we will be seeing if we can get additional funding, but I'm not sure where that stands with the state.
Okay. Very, very concerning to me, but I'm very, very happy that we have the money to make sure that we continue with these ten teaching positions. I'm really not happy that it went from the state to the, to the, to local funding, but at least we have the money. So that, by the way, shows that your budgeting, Dr. Locklear, is more than excellent, because we have that cushion, so that we can absorb that. So, I want to thank you for that foresight.
So I have some questions based upon Dr. Locklear's comments. So, you mentioned that if you did have student growth, you can apply for additional funding. Did you mention that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a method for us to apply and say, hey, we grew, so we want additional funding?
It is, it'd be based on the numbers that they have, they call it the best of, best of either the first month or the second month, whichever month, you end up having the highest membership, you can apply based on that. Now, I don't know if we've got the information from the state exactly how you do that yet, because this is a new model, but yes, sir, that would be our plan to try to advocate for every bit of funding we can get.
So this is more, so, well, I mean, I'm confused, I think that, I would like to know whether that, I would like to know, trying to think how to say this, I would like to know with certainty what that appeals process is, and whether or not, you know, the probability of us getting the funding for the additional students that we have. Because right now, it's, this sounds like a warning order, not a, we've lost this funding, it sounds like they're, okay, you're looking back, but if you've gained, then you can apply and get more money. That sounds more like a fail-safe for school districts that are declining in attendance, which I assume there are quite a few, actually.
There are some, yes, sir.
So, anyway, it would be nice to know with certainty, because before we run around, you know, Chicken Little, the sky is falling, if there's a mechanism for school systems that are growing to recoup that money, then that's probably what that mechanism is there for, but before we panic, we should probably know. Secondly, I find something odd, we grew by eighty-five students, but we lost ten teacher positions. So I know our class ratio was not eight-point-five students to ten teachers, so how did we lose ten teacher positions if we only grew by eighty-five? I assume that the teacher, just when I was listening, I assumed that the teacher positions were future growth teachers, so we actually lost from our net current teachers, or we lost future gain of teachers?
It was based on how many teachers, they had a lot of this last year, when they pushed out the allotments for this year, we got ten fewer positions.
So we have eighty-five more students and ten fewer teachers?
Yes, sir.
But see, that, I don't understand, so can this be explained in some reasonable amount of time, how, if they use, if they lose, if they use last year's numbers, right, then why don't we have last year's teachers? Right, I mean, that should be...
That you would think, you would think where we would be where we were after they reduced a lot, any allotments last year, based on new charter schools and things of that nature. They, all of that goes into the mix of how we get our teaching numbers, you know, how many, how much does charter schools grow, how many positions are we using for North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, which we use some of their services, all of that goes in the mix of how we get our positions overall. And Tina and I both had had questions about where they came in with ten reductions versus where we ended the year. We've asked questions, we've got some explanations, I don't know if we still quite understand the whole process.
Yeah, I think, I, look, again, if they use last year's numbers, we should have last year's teachers, I mean, that's just logic, there's no other way to think about it, unless they changed how they allocate teachers. So we need to get to the bottom of what really happened, because it's not as simple as they used last year's enrollment, because if they used last year's enrollment, we would have, again, the exact same number of teachers, so something else changed, and I would like to know what it was that changed. Did the law change, or did Superintendent Truitt and her team just unilaterally change how they're allocating teachers? In other words, was it a bureaucratic movement referred to generally as a BM, or was it a change in the law?
There was a change in the law in how funding occurs, and I, we are continuing to look into that and continue to advocate, and we will be asking, based on the process that they put out there, we definitely would be advocating that we get additional funding. So that's still in process.
Yeah, so rather than, rather than being told, they're just using the same numbers as last year, it's not as simple as that. I would like to know, just to reiterate, I would like to know what exactly caused the reduction of teachers, what mechanism did, because if it was legislative, then that should be addressed. Thank you.
And if I can just add to that, I know that Moore County Schools is very unique, where we do take our county funds, some of our county funds that the county gives us, and we basically buy teachers, and we use, so, and I think we do that because we want smaller class sizes, correct, Dr. Locklear? Is that kind of why we are funding local, using our local funds for teachers?
I think that's part of it, I think another significant part of our locally funded teachers goes to support what we call enhancement teachers.
Correct, thank you.
Which are special teachers, you know, arts, PE, et cetera, at the K-eight level, excuse me, the six-twelve level. The K-five level, we do get some state funding, but at the six-twelve level, we do not. So we do fund, you know, several of those teachers out of that, out of that funding.
Because the state does not require them, so we have to use local funds to pay for them, correct?
Based on where we're at, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Further? Yes, ma'am?
I don't claim to know what the state does, but I would assume, Dr. Locklear maybe would know that we're probably fortunate here in Moore County with growth of students, whereas the rest of the state probably doesn't reflect that on a whole. And the state probably looked at last year's numbers, because they, they're wanting to cut back how much money that they're giving for the teachers, because they're not seeing the growth across the state in a standard way. It's not, not that it's the right thing to do, but that's probably what they're trying to do, why they're looking at last why they're looking at last year's numbers for this year's teachers. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Okay. All right, further? Further comments? Uh, hearing none. Um, uh, well, uh, that will, uh, go over to, um, uh, to the business portion of the meeting, because it's recommended by the Budget Committee. Second.
And we'll, we'll, um, certainly take some time at the business meeting to walk through the executive summary, uh, as well, uh, which breaks down the entire budget, um, and make sure the board is very clear on that.
Okay. Uh, so, item B. Uh, the Budget Committee, uh, is recommending, uh, somewhere in the nature of a ten, is recommending a ten percent increase, uh, for our school police in the, um, in the, um, in the salaries of our school police. Uh, this is, uh, not, um, uh, the, the administration is not necessarily in agreement with this. I understand the administration, um, would love to see, uh, increases, um, uh, in, in, in salaries, but I do understand that the administration, um, uh, that the administration understands it would be nice to see salaries increase throughout. Um, but in the opinion of the Budget Committee, uh, we would like to amend the, uh, budget resolution to increase the, um, school police salary ten percent. Well, why? Okay? Because that will bring them up roughly to parity with the Sheriff's Department. Well, why? Um, because we have a problem with the school police. We are eleven policemen short. Uh, we've, we've budgeted for an additional four policemen, okay? And we still don't have that. Over the past year, we've lost two policemen. Um, we've lost them, uh, to, uh, to First Health. Why we lose them to First Health? Because First Health is paying more than our school police. So what's the problem? Well, we can't just hire policemen. Uh, the public needs to know that we would like to hire, uh, retired MPs. Uh, we would like to hire, uh, retiring, uh, or, uh, 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 state police from other jurisdictions. We'd like to hire people who are frustrated with, uh, the New York City Police Department and want to come down here and, uh, become police, uh, in, uh, North Carolina. But unfortunately, the law says that the police which we hire, uh, and which school police must hire must be, uh, must be fully certified policemen. So what does that mean? That means that the policeman must have at least one year's worth of experience on a North Carolina police force. Well, what does that mean? Well, that means that we cannot hire the, um, the policeman from, uh, other jurisdictions. We can't hire the MP. Okay? Uh, and, uh, I have gone to the legislature. And, uh, Senator McInnis and, uh, Representative Jackson have gone to the legislature and asked to change that law so that we can hire rookie policemen. My understanding is that the Sheriff's Association, State Sheriff's Association has said, no. They will not allow us, they, they, they will not agree to a change in the law so that we can hire rookie policemen, so that we could send a person to the police academy and then bring them to our police force to train. So what do we do? We have, uh, we're short policemen, okay? Uh, it would be, the only way to get more policemen is either to find police retirees from North Carolina, which are few and far between, or to get policemen from other jurisdictions, uh, in, in the state of North Carolina. But in order to do that, we have to pay a competitive salary. And quite frankly, our salary is not, uh, competitive. Well, it is, it is competitive, but it is not as competitive as it needs to be with the Sheriff's Department. Is that a guarantee that if we raise the salary of policemen, that we're going to get more policemen? No. But I have asked the administration, I have said, do you have another plan? Do you have a plan to get more policemen?
Can we have the staff give the presentation before we get into discussion, please? I, as, as I mentioned before the meeting, I'm kind of in a hurry here.
Yeah, the only reason.
We're not going to get to the presentation.
Yeah, the only reason, the only reason is that, um, it's not the staff's proposal, because the staff is, uh, does disagrees with it. Um, but at any rate, uh, it is the only way. I, I, I would hope that the staff would have another way of finding more policemen. But to me, this is the only way to do it. Uh, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, sir. Um, that's correct. I do not recommend any action on additional salary increases for our school police. Um, our school police serve critical roles for us in Moore County Schools. We're fortunate to have, oh, police force, we've noted that before. Um, we also know it's been incredibly challenging for every police force to recruit new police officers. And we're certainly not, um, you know, we certainly have that same type of impact and challenge recruiting additional officers for our police force. Uh, we've continued to lean into that, continue to look for additional recruitment strategies. Um, but there's not a lot of workforce availability of police officers. Um, with that, when you talk about a salary increase for one, um, you know, one role in our school district and not also look for the many other roles we have in our school district for, for a salary increase, I think that's problematic with over a thousand employees. Um, so, you know, with that, um, you know, I do not recommend that we take action on this. Uh, our salaries overall, um, in many ways are driven by where the state comes in with their salaries for our employees. And so, you know, a lot of our resources for salaries and benefits do come from the state. Some come locally. Um, but our salaries really are driven by where the state budget comes in and where, you know, salaries are for, for our employees and that. Uh, and so certainly that impacts our entire employee team. Um, and so when we're thinking about, um, potentially salary increases for our school police, uh, I think we can't think about that in isolation to our other employees. I would also note to the board that last year, I'm appreciative and certainly we're supportive, based on where we were, uh, that our board did approve, you did approve additional salary increases last year for our school police. Uh, they received an additional four percent on top of what the state gave last year. So our, so our school police did receive double of the percent that the rest of our employees received. Additionally, the board, which I appreciate, and I believe it's the right way to go, approved, uh, training stipends for our school police for advanced training, uh, so they can receive up to three hundred and fifty dollars per month, uh, for additional and advanced training, uh, which we, we shared that information with the Board Budget Committee as well, uh, last week. Um, so, um, this presentation that staff has is the presentation we gave to the board. Uh, we've also included that training stipend in doing some comparison with our, our school police who have training stipends in their salary, how that can, that would compare to the Sheriff's Department. So again, it's not that, that the superintendent, I don't have extreme value and appreciation for our school police. Uh, do our police deserve more money? Yes. Do our teachers? Yes. Do our data managers? Yes. Uh, do our cafeteria managers? Yes. Every employee in a school district deserves to be paid more for the service they do for kids in our county. However, at this time, I just don't recommend action, uh, for their singular role. So, uh, with that, I'll be quiet and let staff, uh, go review the information. Dr. Metcalf and his team and Tina and her team, uh, put together brief information about where we're at, how it compares with the Sheriff's Department, how the training stipend helps, uh, support that. Uh, and, and so this information, how much overall it would cost to raise a salary. So, Dr. Metcalf.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. Good morning.
Real quick, real quick, Dr. Metcalf. I think I'm going to have to leave, as I announced. I have a medical appointment, but I have, before we get into the ask, I was going to wait for my ask until after the presentation, but I have four asks. Uh, I would like to know what the salary study, there's, there's, well, with the addition of, uh, well, there's ten sworn departments in Moore County that doesn't include private police forces such as, uh, O'Neill School or First Health. Uh, I would like to see a salary study of the other departments in, uh, in Moore County. Uh, we can't just take the Sheriff's Department. We need to look at all ten, uh, sworn departments so that we know where we fall in the pay range with them. Uh, I would also like to see the duty summary of, uh, this is for next meeting, this is for the next meeting for consideration of the board. So first, uh, not just the sheriff's, but a, a study in comparison with the other nine sworn departments. I'd like to see duty summaries of SROs, uh, uh, in comparison with, uh, other departments. For example, working weekends, working nights, shift work and whatnot, uh, patrol work, working on the road. So I'd like to see job descriptions of patrol officers in, uh, in other, uh, district, in the other ten nine sworn departments, along with the SRO duty summary, because they're very different. Uh, I would like to see, and we may have this, I'm not sure, but I'd like to see the total yearly pay of our SROs with overtime annotated, whether they're a ten-month or a twelve-month SRO. And then finally, and I hit on this last, uh, last school board meeting, and I don't know that it was followed up on, uh, if it, if it does, was, just let me know. But, uh, I would, you gave a guesstimate, uh, last month, but I'd like to know when the last of the equipment, uh, for our existing SROs were bought, specifically the shields, the patrol rifles, and the patrol plates. And, uh, when I asked that, uh, last meeting, four weeks ago, three weeks ago, uh, I was told sometime in the spring. I'd like to know the exact month when that was ordered and when it was delivered. So those are my questions upfront. I apologize, but, uh, I don't think I'm going to have time to sit through this whole thing. Thank you.
Uh, do you want, do, do, do you want to, uh, wait and, uh, finish this up? I could stop this right now and wait until you come back. Um, uh, why don't, why don't we do, is, is that inconvenient for your staff, Dr. Lock? If what I'd like to do is not have the presentation right this second, okay? Mr. Hensley has a, has a dentist appointment, I believe, something like that, whatever it is. Um, uh, he'll be back, and then we can resume it when Mr. Hensley comes back. Does that work? Yeah, yeah, okay. All, all right, and, and, and we'll continue with the rest of that. Is that okay, Dr. Locklear?
Certainly can do that, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. So we'll suspend item B, uh, for Mr. Hensley's return. Uh, so let's go to, uh, out-of-state field trips.
Mrs. Metcalf will come up, uh, and Mrs. Sinan. We've got several out-of-state field trips. Um, I would say these are ones, types of ones the board has seen in the past. Uh, but I'll turn it right over to Ms. Sinan and Ms. Metcalf to review those briefly for the board. It do come with my recommendation for approval.
Good morning. So the New Century, uh, Middle School Music Department would like to travel to Williamsburg, Virginia. There's a competition called the Annual Music in the Parks Competition. That is in April of 2025. Pinecrest High School Speech and Debate has, uh, two competitions coming up. George Mason University in December of 2024 and the Harvard National Invitational, um, in February of 2025. Uh, the Union Pines Wrestling Team, uh, has, uh, the following competitions. There's a Girls' Beast of the East Wrestling Tournament in Delaware in December.
What was that again?
It's called the Girls' East of the Beast Wrestling Tournament, and it goes with the Beast of the East Wrestling Tournament, uh, which is for the boys. Um, they're both in December, they're just offset by a day. And then there's a wrestling quad meet in New Kent, Virginia in January of 2025. Westmore Elementary School would like to take its, uh, sixth grade students to Medieval Times in, uh, Myrtle Beach, uh, South Carolina in November. And then Westmore Elementary would like to take their seventh and eighth grade students to Washington DC, uh, for historical sites and museums in March of 2025.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, for the Westmore, are they staying then there, or is it a day trip?
It is a day trip.
Okay, thank you.
As is the New Century Middle School trip.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Um, just looking at the live tournament show in Wonder Works, does that have any tie-in at all with the curriculum?
So, um, there is a tie-in for the Medieval Times with the World History Curriculum, um, there. And then the Wonder Works is the STEM curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Um, do, Dr. Locklear, do we have to vote on this here, or is this just for, that's for the business meeting?
Could be on the consent agenda if the board wants to put it there, certainly.
All right, very good, all right. Uh, so we don't have to say joust a minute? Okay? I had to say that.
Yeah, this could, that could be taken care of next week, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, Pinecrest High School gym roof repair.
Yes, Ms., um, Ms. Purvis is joining us for a couple items here. The first, uh, needed roof repair at Pinecrest High School. And the second, a three-end laminate, which we've talked a little bit of with the board before, is a safety-related, uh, item. So, Mrs. Purvis.
Yes, sir. Um, the following informal bids were gathered for the repair of the roof on the main gymnasium at Pinecrest High School. Fox Hill Construction, four hundred eleven thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars. Gallagher Management, three hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. And McRae Roofing, four, five hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. The lowest responsive bidder was Gallagher Management. They will apply a fully reinforced fluid applied membrane. It has a thirty-year warranty. Along with that thirty-year warranty, there will be permit preventive maintenance. They will come out at years two, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and twenty-five. Um, staff recommends the contract be awarded to Gallagher Management in the amount of three hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, and this project will be paid with capital funds.
Questions?
Yes, I have one. Um, so Gallagher Management, how long have they been in business for?
Gallagher Management has been in business, um, I can't tell you the exact date, um, but they've been in business a good amount of time. The product is produced by Trimco. So this is a specific product that we were looking at, because we found this at one of our maintenance conventions. Um, so when we were looking for the restoration of this Pinecrest Gym Roof, we specifically wanted this Trimco product, which is why we reached out to these three specific contractors, because they are licensed to work with this product. Most recently, Gallagher installed this product, uh, at the Greensboro Piedmont Triad Airport on their main terminal. Um, so this is used all over hospitals, airports, universities. Um, but the product will be engineered by Trimco, and Trimco will have a person on site at all times.
Okay, that, that was mine, yes, just, I never heard of them before. I've heard of McRae Roofing and Fox Hill, but, so that's why my question was, because, yeah, God forbid, if they went out of business, would we still have that warranty?
Yes, the warranty is through Trimco.
Okay, thank you.
Is the maintenance included in the cost, or is that additional?
That is included in the cost.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Question? What does a typical PM, uh, visit entail?
That's going to look at them coming, um, getting up on top of the roof, ensuring that all, um, of the membrane is still applied, it's, the adhesive is still there, there are no cracks to that. Um, you know, in between time, we have folks who are going to be on top of the roof, uh, working on air conditions and whatnot. So they're going to ensure that if anything has unsealed, that that is taken care of. Um, just making sure that nothing comes apart or we have any leaks in between time, because this is a thirty-year warranty.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Okay. All right, so they'll probably go on the consent agenda. Um, the, um, the, yes, um, going to the, uh, three M laminate?
Yes, this, this item is one in which we have briefed the board's, uh, construction committee. Uh, and I, I believe we've also mentioned it to the board, uh, when I briefed the board on safety and, and when I work around safety, uh, the board probably recalls that we had a safety assessment of our facilities and our system and processes almost two years ago. One of the areas that the safety- One of the areas that the safety assessment identified and that we're continuing working to do is to increase the safety of our entrances, or harden our entrances, is a safety terminology that's used. One of the ways we can do that is through this laminate, and I'm gonna let Ms. Purvis brief the board on that. There's a brief video we can watch part of as well to demonstrate the benefit of this laminate. And then, and we're looking at this kind of as a multi-phase, and this would be the first phase that would include our front office entrances to our facilities. So, Mrs. Purvis?
Yes, I'll first share with you our executive summary, and then we'll take a look at the demonstration of the product. The following informal bids were gathered for the application of 3M Ultra S800 Protective Laminate Adhesive Safety System. I specified that there are other laminate safety systems that you can get that are cheaper. However, we did wanna go with this 3M Ultra S800. This will be applied to all entryways of schools, the Ed Center, and the central office. This application of the laminate safety film delays intruder entry time and hardens the safety of our facilities. Brand Connect came in at $74,711.36. Carolina Solar came in at $62,260.67. And Film Tech came in at $54,611.70. The lowest responsive bidder was Film Tech, and they will apply the laminate to 2,118 square feet of windows throughout all campuses in this first phase. As we look at the second phase, we would focus on large gathering spaces with windows such as libraries and cafeterias. And our final phase would be the application of this product to all remaining exterior windows. Staff recommends the contract be awarded to Film Tech in the amount of $54,611.70. And Mr. Bachelor, I do have a link at the bottom of the executive summary. Well, it's about five minutes long, but we'll watch about the first two minutes so you guys can get an idea of how this product works. Thanks, Paul. And I do have this link to the executive summary if you wanna watch the entire thing. I think you got the, the picture here of what happens. As you know, the tragedy at Sandy Hook, the window was shot out, the intruder stepped right in. So what this will do is delay the time so that we have more time for folks to respond before an intruder could gain entry into our buildings.
I'm not against it, but I did notice that it's not bulletproof.
It is not bulletproof.
Okay, so just to be clear.
This is not keeping a bullet out.
Right.
What this is doing is delaying the entry time of the intruder.
Okay.
We know that the first two to three minutes is when most of the damage is done, once someone gets inside of a school.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we're trying to delay that entry time to allow responders to be there quickly. This just keeps the intruder out for a longer period of time and allows more time for us to react.
Okay, and I appreciate it. I just want to be very clear.
Yes, ma'am. It is not bulletproof.
Thank you, ma'am.
Further question? You said that this was gonna cost approximately how much?
This is just for the entryways is what we're doing right now, $54,611.70. This will be just the entryways of each of our schools, the central office, and the Ed Center.
All right, well, it seems like a very small amount, considering our budget, you know, it's a lot of money, obviously, but given our budget, it seems like a small amount of money for some very, very, very good securities.
Yes.
I think it's a good, a good investment.
I'm sorry, I do have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
I believe I know the answer. Bulletproof glass are, is much more expensive, I would assume.
Yes, ma'am.
Approximately, what's the difference in the cost? Or do you know, and I'm sorry if I'm putting you on?
I don't know, but it's, it's not gonna be a laminate that we could put on. We'd actually have to replace windows.
Thank you, okay, all right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Further, further questions? All right. Next, first reading of our new policy on, I believe this is recommended by the Policy Committee. It is the only policy which the Policy Committee does recommend at this time, and it is on remote work. Am I correct, Dr. Locklear?
That's correct. This was sent back to committee just for one additional review. We presented it in an August board meeting. The committee, and Ms. Davis, I'll certainly give you any opportunity you'd like to share as well as chaired committee, but committee made no changes, and it does come with committee's recommendation as well as my recommendation that we move forward. Again, just to restate what I shared in August, we, we do not currently have a teleworking policy in Moore County schools, and I think it would be important for us to have a board policy as a board, as a district, on telework, you know, what it is in Moore County schools, and the circumstances it can be used in Moore County schools. We also have a regulation that's been shared with committee and the board previously that has a lot of details and parameters around how that would be approved, when someone's eligible for it, when they're not, et cetera. So I just think it's important as a district that we have this policy and regulation that would govern this moving forward.
Okay. Any questions on the policy or anything such as that? Seeing none, that'll go to the, the second reading at the business meeting. Okay, North Carolina State School Boards Association voting delegates. Dr. Locklear, do you wanna explain that, or do you want me to explain it? What do you, what do you want to do?
Well, it just, each school district, as members of the North Carolina School Board Association, have the ability to have voting delegates that would attend the state school board meeting. The North Carolina School Board Association State Annual Conference in November. So we could have up to four delegates who plan to attend, be voting delegates there, and so it's, it's the purview of the board to nominate who those would be.
Okay, so that's, there's a very interesting sort of sidelight to this. We have four delegate slots, okay? But we have an election, and two people are gonna go off of our board. Well, then you say, well, who should be our delegates? But the way the selection process works is the new people who are elected at the, at the election in November can't be a delegate, because they'll be elected after we have to name the delegates, okay? So, so we have four slots and as many alternates as we want. Okay, the conference is?
November 18th through 20th.
Yeah, November 18th through the 20th. So?
And there's usually a board ethics training on the 17th, correct, Cindy?
Yeah, and is that say a three, four-day conference? Am I, am I correct?
Yes, sir. New board members are always invited to attend the ethics training on the 17th, which is Sunday evening, and it goes through Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that's correct.
And they can attend even though they're not so-called delegates, okay? All right, all right. So this is the, kind of the way I'd like to handle it. We have to approve this, all right? Is there anybody who thinks that they don't want to attend the conference? No, 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 but of those people, of those people who are going to be on the board, okay? So you don't think you're gonna be, okay. Now, here's what happens. He's the alternate, okay? Everyone else, myself, Ms. Davis, Ms. Bruto, Mr. Hensley, they're the delegates, okay? Do you see what I'm saying? So if one of us decides not to go, or one of us is not elected, which is also a possibility, you know, then you as the alternate would get to be the delegate if you decided to go then, okay? Do you see what I'm saying? So I would propose to make the delegates to be Ms. Davis, Ms. Bruto, Mr. Hensley, and myself, okay? With the, with the alternate to be Mr. Benway, okay? Is, is that okay?
Excuse, is this the conference that we go to in Greensboro every year?
Correct.
Okay. So you don't have to go someplace else?
No, 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 it's, you just, it's, it's a three, four-day conference at the Corey, the Corey Center in, in, in Greensboro. So, so it's that.
Question.
Yes.
Is there an agenda published for this in addition to the ethics?
No. Yes. And should you change your mind, you can still attend, even if all, if, if there, but chances are, one of the four people that we're naming won't attend, and then you could also be the delegate, but all that means is it's just the voting for the, whatever their resolutions are and things like that. But actually, it is a worthwhile conference, because they have what are called breakout sessions, where they have various people make presentations, and you see, you're, you're exposed to all sorts of safety presentations and other presentations with the board, and you get to talk to other board members from around the state, who have some interesting ideas about all sorts of different things.
I have no intention of intending anyway. I'm, I'm just curious, no, I'm just curious as to what the agenda would be. There may be some topics that we want some added emphasis on, some further investigation and preparation, so.
Well, there are, there, there are. I've, I've, I've found out that some of those breakout sessions are quite interesting. Some of them aren't, aren't worth a thing, but some of them are very interesting.
Thank you.
And you don't need four exactly, though, so if, if, like, say two people wanted to show up, they could show up for, to be a delegate, correct?
All I wanna make sure is, is that our slate is filled.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so that if everybody wants to show up, and I would put the newbies on there if I could, but unfortunately, the way the board has it structured, you can't do it, which I think is absolutely silly, but that is their decision, that's not ours. Okay, so we'll go ahead. So that'll be the proposal, that those four people are our delegates and are, still, even if you decide not to attend, you're still an alternate. Okay. So that'll be the proposal for the consent agenda. All right, next, the review of the Moore County Schools capstone. Well, let's do the agenda for the, the budget resolution will be a vote, I assume. The, regardless of how this turns out, the proposal on the, on, on the police force will be a vote. Out-of-state field trips, I assume it's consent, am I right? Okay. Pinecrest Gymnasium, is that consent? It is. The 3M laminate, is that consent? Okay. The first reading of the new policy will be a vote, and the School Boards Association Conference, that is a consent. Am I correct? Okay. Moving right along, the review of the Moore County Schools capstone outcomes, process, goals of the Moore County Schools strategic plan. That sounds like a lot, Dr. Locklear, why don't you explain it?
Let's put it in a very common language. This is how we did on state testing data and, and other measurable outcomes that we look at as a district. And these are, these are tied to, this is data that helps us know how we're doing with our district strategic plan goals, which is why we tie it back to our strategic plan that the, that the board has set. And, you know, I'll, I'm not gonna steal the thunder, but I'm, I am gonna say, right off the bat, I'm extremely proud of how Moore County Schools is doing. I'm extremely proud that Moore County Schools is a beacon of light in the state of North Carolina, and is one of the best school districts in the state of North Carolina when you look at state testing data and outcomes. And that's because of the hard work of our team and our entire employee team, because no matter what they're doing, it impacts kit, whether it's fixing a window, making sure our air condition's working, feeding our students, making sure we've got the data information, our student information systems, or whether it's the teacher in the classroom or school administrators, no matter what role folks are playing, they're making an impact on this work. So just extremely proud of our school district. Now, does that mean we have areas that we need to work on? Absolutely. There are areas where we are not performing, where we need to perform, and we will continue to focus on those areas and grow those areas. But I just wanted to start off by saying, I think overall, the news is good. It's very good, and we continue to see growth in Moore County schools. So I hope I didn't steal your thunder, Ms. Fall, Dr. Metcalf, Ms. Sinon, but I'll?
We're used to it.
Yeah, I know, you're used to it. I get fired up about this kind of stuff, and I'm, I'm very fired up for how we continue to perform as a school district. So, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Locklear. We are very proud of the work of our teachers and our whole staff. As Dr. Locklear mentioned, we have a lot to be proud of. You as a board have a lot to be proud of, and we'll share those data points with you here in a second. As always, there's work for us to, to focus on and to do, and it's always about continual improvement, continual improvement, continual drive to get better. So we, we love our successes, we focus on those areas where we need to focus on to make ourselves better. So with your permission, Mr. Levy, Chair Levy, I'll have Ms. Fall kinda review the key data points for 2324. That include the end of grade, the Lexile reading level, school growth, school performance, ACT, ACT work key, dropouts, graduation rate, post-graduation success. So she'll hit all of those, and then we'll hand it over to Ms. Sinon, who will put that into some context. So she'll take those data points, she'll compare to like schools, school systems that are similar to us, she'll compare it to the state, and she'll compare it to our region as well, kind of put those data points into context, and then we'll finish up by just going through the board strategic plan and kind of reporting out where we are on the board strategic plan, and I'll do that piece. And I will try to not jump in with my own comments, but it's very difficult for me to not give my point of view as Kate and Jamie share the, share the data points. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Fall to start.
So student proficiency consists of students' performance on the end of grades, known as the EOGs, in grades three through eight, English Language Arts, math, and in grades five and eight, science. At the end of course, or EOC exams, is English II, NC Math I, NC Math III, and Biology. Grade level proficiency, or GLP, is the percent of students who score at or above achievement level of three out of five. This is the standard measure for the North Carolina Accountability calculation, and it's what the state refers to as performance composite. As you can see, Moore County's overall proficiency was 62.4, up 2.1 percentage points from last year, and above the 2018-19 pre-pandemic performance. Once again, Moore County outperformed the state, this time by 8.2 percentage points. One of the things we always look at is subgroup performance, specifically our largest racial subgroup, as well as economically disadvantaged, known as EDS, students with disability, SWD, and academically and intellectually gifted, or AIG. As you know, one student may qualify in multiple subgroups, so one student could impact multiple ones of these measures. As you can see from this table, Moore County subgroup performance is similar to the trend in the state, in that white students outperform their minority peers. Our black students are performing at about half the rate of their white peers, while Hispanic students, while still outpacing the state, are still performing 11 percentage points below the whole. Economically disadvantaged and students with disability are performing slightly above straight performance, but are still dramatically below the district average performance, with the difference of 18.4 and 41.9 percentage points respectively, below. the difference of 18.4 and 41.9 percentage points respectively, below district average performance. Overall, AIG student performance remains high and above the state. In order to help us truly target the instructional needs of our students, we need to drill down to the individual subjects and then the grade levels. We'll start with English Language Arts, or ELA. As we have said before, this ELA assessment measures students' understanding on the grade level standards. That includes things like identifying the theme, naming the main character, defining vocabulary. On this table, you will see Moore County in blue and the state represented in orange. Our district outperformed the state on every ELA assessment. I'll give you a moment to review those assessments. Starts with reading grade three, all the way through to grade eight, and then E2 is English II, which is mostly sophomore course.
Now, the blue is, is us.
Correct.
And the other one is the state.
Yes, correct. Blue is us, orange is the state. When reviewing how we perform on an assessment, it's important to understand contact, but context, but it's equally important to understand the trend data as measured against ourselves. We are looking here at each test over the course of last, last five years. As a comparison point, we've included the 2018-19 year, which was the last pre-pandemic year. There is no data from 1920 due to the school closures. And looking at our trends, reading in third and fifth grade is slightly down from last year, down 1.5 percentage points and .4 percentage points respectively. Reading in grades four, six, seven, eight, and English II are up, with a range of an increase of .3 percentage points in fourth grade to 6.9 percentage point improvement in sixth grade. All grade levels except for third and fifth grade performed higher than prior to pandemic. As we look at individual subjects, we cannot forget to look at subgroup performance. As you can see, the trend in English Language Arts mirrors the trend overall, with black students underperforming compared to other groups and to the state. While Hispanics are underperforming by a smaller margin, our economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities show a large gap between the whole and that of the subgroup. Just a moment to review those. I don't want to go too fast. Oh, there is a, on the first table that you're looking at, I did accidentally flip the colors, and we didn't just catch that. Thank you. Thank you, sir. So the district is in orange on that first one. I'll fix that. My apologies. Okay? Now let's look at math. This includes end of grade in grades three through eight, and end of course in NC Math I and NC Math III. Looking at grades three through eight, we continued to outperform the state, most recently by 3.2 percentage points. In Math I, we were 9.7 percentage points above the state and 2.6 percentage points above in Math III. When we examine the trend data for each of these tests, we can see that in the elementary schools, almost all grade levels, grade levels have returned to close to pre-pandemic performance, seventh grade and Math I being those exceptions. Elementary school math showed a decline between two and three percentage points. Middle school math, however, showed improvement across the board, and a special shout out to sixth grade math with an improvement of 11.6 percentage points over last year. You will also note an improvement in Math I scores of 8.1 percentage points. However, conversely, there was a decline of 7.4 percentage points in Math III.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And this might, might be a real dumb one, but why are we so much higher in Math III than Math I? Isn't, isn't that kind of a building block?
It can be, but you've also got to consider that the, the students, the student population is different in Math I than it's going to be in Math III. So while Math I does have a lot of foundational skills for Math III.
Right.
There's also a grade level in between where a lot of catching up can happen in that Math II. So you've got Math I, then you're in Math II, which is not a tested assessment, and then you're into Math III.
Okay, now I understand.
So there's a, there's a second middle.
Different population of kids.
Yes.
Different population of students.
Okay. Thank you.
Then don't we, don't we also have eighth graders taking Math I?
Yes, sir.
Which, which destroys the, the grades for Math I in high school, right?
I, destroys is a very strong word.
That's a terrible, that's a terrible choice of words.
Yes, but it does impact.
It, it, it changes it and makes it a little bit more negative than it might otherwise be, because a lot of our, our more advanced students are taking Math I in the eighth grade, right?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Paul, and I was thinking the same thing. There's almost a handicapping aspect to this whole thing, as it goes for the.
There's context.
Yes.
I mean, there's context. Every, two things I would, I would remind us. These are all based on one test on one day that lasts three hours or more for a student in a week where they may take multiple tests. And so sometimes we get hung up on the meaning of it. We just have to remind ourselves of what this really is, A. And B, there's context to every test, just like Mr. Levy pointed out here. Certain kids are taking it, other students may have taken a different time, and they're not counted in that particular number. There's, there's a lot of context to every single test that we gave, or that we give. And so I think, I think we have to put all of that in our mind when we're sharing this out, that there's meaning behind each of these tests.
As with ELA, math subgroup performance on the end of grade follows the same trend. White students are significantly outperforming minority peers, economically disadvantaged and students with disabilities are in line with state performance, but drastically below the overall average. And then high school tells the same story. So you've got on this table, Math I is the first chart and Math III is the second one. Give you a second to review those. Historically, science has been one of our highest performing tests across all grade levels. Science grade five took a slight dip of 2% to percentage points, but the eighth grade and biology are up 1.5 percentage points and 7.2 percentage points respectively. As you can see, we are close to pre-pandemic performance in elementary and middle, and biology has steadily increased to beyond pre-pandemic performance.
I'm going to jump in as an educational piece here, because I can't help myself. The standards are changing for science. That's going into place this year, and the students will be tested on the new standards at the end of this year. And so you're likely to see next year, you're likely to see a drop in science as we're testing on standards that we are just learning now, first time we're teaching it. Traditionally, that, that is what happens when new standards are put into place. And so next year, you're likely to see a little bit of a lower number. I'm going to say that over and over again the next several weeks when we're talking about different schools and how they have done, too, with the school improvement, because we need to educate ourselves in what this may look like next year as well.
On what basis have those standards changed?
They go through a whole process in terms of adjusting the standards. They have a community input, they, you know, they review the standards, or they have a schedule to review the standards in every subject area. Teachers are involved in that process. The state will pull in teachers into that process, they'll pull in community into that process. It's created quite an involved process around those standards. And then we can share that in a little deeper way, what their standards are and how they'll change, but we're just receiving that information and, and training on that and working on that.
Does someone from the district sit on these boards and participate?
We have a representative who's involved in that. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, excuse me. Could you, could you kind of summarize what the differences in these new science standards are?
See, I knew I shouldn't have brought this. Huge mistake in judgment on that, on my part, Ms. Bruna. You know, I hesitate to do that. My expert on that is Donna Gett Part, and I don't have her here. I'd be happy to share that, but again, we're learning that now. But I can certainly share, there's some language changes, there's an increase in complexity that you'll see in the standards. Generally, you would see that as they raise the bar a little bit with the standards, why sometimes you'll see a drop down. But I don't want to give specifics. I'd be, I want to be direct and honest and give you the actual information, and Donna's the one who can do that.
We're going to beat this to death.
That's okay. I brought it up. It's my fault. The superintendent's going to have a strong conversation with me at this meeting, I feel certain.
Bottom line up front.
Yes, sir.
The, how does that affect preparation of teachers now?
Yeah, that's, that's a struggle for us, because, you know, in an ideal world, we would have the information a year in advance so that we could do training over the summer, use our normal processes for that. Unfortunately, I think that doesn't always happen that way, and so we're kind of training as we go along and implementing. We're kind of disappointed that they're changing the assessment to the new standards this, end of this school year, because we're just now starting that process of training our teachers in what they need to be teaching, if that makes sense. And so it doesn't make sense, but it is the way that it is. And so that's a frustration for us and another reason why you sometimes see these, these drops in here. And I don't want to give the impression that it's like, you know, we're throwing it up and we're not teaching anything that we taught before. It's just a raising of that bar, a little bit changing of the language, and some adaption to those standards that are in place. And so I don't want to make more of it than it is, but it is a change that will impact those results, we believe. And you'll hear more about that, I think, from principals when they speak to you in, later in October.
Okay.
At the school improvement conference. They'll share their results in the science area and what their concerns are there a little bit.
And just to add, and Rich can correct me if I'm wrong here, but that's driven some by general statute as well, the review of standards, review and revising them. So some of that's driven by the whole process, if I'm not mistaken, Rich. It's driven by general statute as well.
Am I correct? Also, the general statute says that every so many years, you have to revise your standards in various subjects, and that rolls from subject to subject.
Yeah, there's a, there's a schedule for that.
Yes, and there's, there's a schedule of revising.
That's correct.
Which sometimes is good and sometimes is bad.
Yes.
Does this come from the federal government or the state?
State.
State.
Yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, Dr. Locklear.
We're back on topic.
And get us moving here. My apologies.
So looking at science still, well, overall performance in science is higher across the board. The discrepancy with minority performance mirrors the same trend as in other subjects. And as we've discussed before, it's a hard thing to do because everyone, everyone, if everyone improves, then the overall composite improves. So what you're trying to do to close the gap is having minority groups perform at two to three times the rate of non-white peers. So it's a, it's a difficult challenge to meet. As I stated before, the North Carolina end of course assessment in ELA and English II are designed to measure students' understanding of the grade and subject level standards. However, that assessment also, separate from that, measures the Lexile reading score or the ability of a student to read at grade level. English II is the last assessment that is given in reading to all students, and as a reminder, 10th grade reading level would be about that of a Wall Street Journal. Please note that all students who take the assessment, including exceptional education children, are included in that calculation, and that below at level may mean that they are reading at an eighth grade level. It doesn't necessarily mean they're reading at a second grade level. So just keep that in mind. Based on this data, 82% of our students are reading at or above grade level. This is a decrease of six percentage points, but a return to previous norms. Last year was actually the anomaly year.
This is reading. Is it understanding?
This is truly just Lexile level, so the ability to read what you're reading, read what you are, thank you, comprehend what you are reading, yes.
So you are, this is not only just reading the words, this is comprehending what you're reading.
That is part of the Lexile score. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And how is, how is that done?
The Lexile level is measured, part of what, when we get our assessments from the end of grade assessments for ELA, we get our regular proficiency score, which is did they get it right or wrong on what the question was asking? But based on the questions that they're getting right, they can also calculate a Lexile level, like what is the understanding of the students who are taking this assessment? And so the Lexile reading level is a secondary score that comes from those end of grades assessments.
Okay.
It may be beneficial in the future to, to show the, like, whenever I would receive the test back from the state for my children that I homeschooled, I could see the comprehension, I could see the text, like, how it's, how, how they break it out, and that would help other board members and even the public.
Be able to see it.
Be able to see it.
Sure. Be happy to share that.
Because that would, I think, visualizing that would explain a lot.
Sure. This, this one is, I'm passionate about this one.
Oh, I am too.
Personally, and the public understanding of this. That 82% at 10th grade or above does not mean that there's then, you know, 18% or 28% would be, 28%. 28% that can't read. Our EC population is about 17%, so I throw that into the mix. I would also say, I think there's about 11% that are reading on that eighth grade level. So an eighth grade level would be a Harry Potter book, somewhere in that range. So those students can read and understand at a high level, they're just not at a 10th or greater level. So it doesn't indicate that we've got this large number of students who can't read, 18% not 28%.
It also, I think, depends on, so for instance, there could be slow readers, not that they don't comprehend it, but it's the slow readers and then it's a timed, it's a timed test. So that can affect it.
It is, correct. And it's one test on one day.
And it's a long test.
And it's a long test, and some students are more motivated than other students are on any particular day, so that can impact that number as well.
So to be clear, we don't, we not only say, can you read, but we say, what can you read? Which is the more important, the second question is the more important.
Yeah, what level are you reading at? What can you comprehend at?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Separate from grade level proficiency, we also measure student growth. Growth is the amount of ground that a student gains from year to year compared to like peers across the state. So a student who's not necessarily at grade level for proficiency could potentially be closing the gap by making one or more years' worth of growth in a time. Growth is measured comparative to the state with a score of met expected growth, did not meet expected growth, or exceeds expected growth. It is recalculated every year and compared to a new number every year, so fluctuation in performance is common. In terms of growth, Moore County had 17 schools meet or exceed growth. Two schools, Pinehurst Elementary and Santos Farm left, maintained their exceeded expected growth status. Six schools maintained their met expected growth status from last year, and eight schools exceeded, eight schools increased their status. General Statute 115C-83 outlines school performance grade rules. This includes the calculation for the school letter grade and is made up of proficiency, which is that first scores that we were looking at at 80% of the calculation, and growth, the scores we just looked at, being about 20%. Moore County has a lot to be proud of in relationship to school performance grade. One school, Pinehurst, was an A. Eight schools had B status, 11 schools C status, one D status, and one school did drop to an F. 15 schools maintained their performance over last year. Two schools showed a decrease in letter grade performance, and five schools showed an increase in letter grade performance. While it may not have resulted in a grade level change, 13 schools showed an improvement in their overall raw score. General Statute 115C-105.37 denotes low performing schools as those school performance grades with a D or F and a growth measure of met or not met expected growth. Using that criteria, Moore County has two low performing schools, Aberdeen Elementary and Robbins Elementary. At this point, they are also the only two consistently low performing schools in the district for the first time. The ACT is a college readiness exam that is taken by all 11th grade students. The ACT is a curriculum-based educational development test that measures English, math, reading, and science. The composite score is based on who met the North Carolina benchmark of 19. As a reminder, in 2122, the UNC system changed its enrollment measure from 17 to 19, and so the state followed suit in 2122. So the baseline for 2122 is really a new baseline of 19 as opposed to 17. Moore County students showed a drop in proficiency, and for the first time, the state average was above Moore County. Well, ACT measures college readiness. A significant percentage of our students are focused on careers right out of high school. Our career and technical education program continues to grow and allow students to earn industry-recognized certifications and credentials, making them more marketable in the workplace after high school. Last year, our students earned 4,646 individual industry credentials or certifications, an increase of almost 40 credentials, and continue of a continuation of a positive growth trend. In addition to the credentials and certifications, career and technical education students who have earned four CTE credits in a career cluster, which are like topics in a single subject area, take the ACT work keys assessment in their senior year. This test includes applied math, graphic literacy, workplace documentation, as well as a lot of soft skills that employers are seeking. The goal is to score a silver, gold, or platinum. We are once again above the state's performance, this time by 3.7 percentage points. In terms of subgroup performance, the gap is smaller than that for our grade level proficiency, but it does still exist. White students took a dip in proficiency of 4.5 percentage points, going from 72.7 to 68.2% proficient. Black students increased their performance by 3.8 percentage points, going from 40.9 Black students increased their performance by three point eight percentage points, going from forty point nine to forty-four point seven. And Hispanic students increased their performance by one point two percentage points, going from forty-six point nine to forty-eight point one. When looking at dropout data, you want to see low percentages, unlike the other ones we're looking at. This data is not yet available for last school year as it's reported out in February of the following year. However, the dropout rate did increase slightly between the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school years. An increase of point zero seven percentage points.
No, I'm sorry. Now, when you say dropout, that means they did not re-enroll in any other school in any district, anywhere, or.
That we cannot document that they re-enrolled in any sort of education, private, private, whatever, public, private homeschool, all of those.
Countrywide.
Yes, within twenty days of the start of the next school year.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the dropout rate measures the number of students who leave school. The graduation rate measures the percent of students who complete high school within four years. So it doesn't mean that they didn't graduate just within that four-year range. Well, we saw a decrease of two percentage points, Moore County's graduation rate is still higher than the state's rate. When we look at graduation rates by subgroup, you can see that in most areas, Moore County continues to graduate a higher percentage than the state. The exception to that is black students, which is two point two percentage points lower than the state. Students with disability continue to be our lowest subgroup at seventy-four point one percent of our students graduating within four years. While our Hispanic rate and our English language learner rate is substantially higher than the state at seven point five and eleven point two percentage points above respectively. North Carolina tracks students' after-high-school performance in order to determine longitudinal access, or success, sorry. My Future NC portal shows that eighteen percent of Moore County students took at least one advanced placement course. That's compared to sixteen percent of the state and eight percent in our peer counties. Sixty-four percent of Moore County students enroll in some form of post-secondary education within one year of graduation, compared to fifty-eight percent across the state and fifty-two in our peer counties. Of those students, eighty-four percent remain enrolled for a second year, which is marginally higher than the state, but six percentage points higher than our peer counties. And of the students who enrolled in post-secondary, sixty-two percent of Moore County graduates completed a degree within sixty-two ye- six, sorry, sixty-two percent within six years, sorry. A slight increase over the last data report out and still markedly higher than the state and peer averages. My apologies.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and look at the context ranking. We take a look at this first slide, this is the grade level proficiency state comparison. So in the first table, you'll see that Moore County Schools ranking in the state since two thousand eighteen, nineteen, where it was thirty-seven out of one hundred and fifteen districts. As you can see, Moore County Schools has improved the state ranking each year. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year, Moore County Schools moved to tenth in the state out of one hundred and fifteen districts. In the second table, you'll see the top five districts in the state. Our composite proficiency is sixty-two point four, which is eight point two percentage points above the state average. For the grade level proficiency regional comparison, we are in the Sandhills Regional Educational Service Alliance, that's our RISA. And they include the following counties, Anson, Bladen, Columbus, Cumberland, Harnett, Hope, Lee, Moore, Robinson, Richmond, Sampson, Scotland, and Whiteville City Schools.
Is, is that geographic or is that, it's just?
Yep, that's our Sandhills region.
Okay, so it just doesn't have anything to do with population or anything like that?
Nope, we'll, we'll talk about like districts and just.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, but this is just our Sandhills region.
Right.
So that includes thirteen districts, and within our, our, um, Sandhills RISA, we continue to rank number one. Eight point nine percentage points higher than the number two district, which is Whiteville City Schools. And then sixteen point six percentage points higher than the RISA average, so our Sandhills region. For our like districts, according to the School Efficiency Consultant Central Services Staffing Comparison from August fifth, two thousand and fifteen, and our local analysis of demographics, Moore County's like districts are Brunswick County, Burke County, Carteret County, Chatham County, Craven County, Dare County, Haywood County, Henderson County, and Lincoln County. So those are those districts that we're compared to as like districts. For the, I didn't click, I'm so sorry. Maybe you need to click.
Okay, gotcha, I got it.
I forget to click.
Dare, Dare County up in, up in the east? Okay, looks, seems, seems very different from us, but go ahead.
So that was based on the demographic data. Polk County and Union County used to be a part of that, but they are no longer considered like districts. So we are number three in our top five schools for the like counties. So you'll see that average there, the fifty-nine point four, sixty-two point four is where we're at. For the ACT state comparison, for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, the ACT proficiency was thirty-eight point two, which placed Moore County Schools forty-third in the state out of one hundred and fifteen school districts. This is an area in our data where we're not satisfied, and we'll continue to work to increase this ranking in proficiency. For the regional comparison, although our ranking across the state is not where we want it to be, we are number one in our region, which is the Sandhills region, scoring fourteen point four percentage points higher than the regional average. And then again, for our like districts, like districts include Brunswick County, Burke, Carteret, Chatham, Craven, Dare, Haywood, Henderson, and Lincoln. Out of those nine like districts, we are ranking nine out of those districts with thirty-eight point two, and the like district average is forty-four point eight percentage points.
How, how is like districts determined?
So initially, I think back in twenty fifteen, the finance department did some analysis, they brought an outside company in to do some analysis. They developed what districts we should compare ourselves to, that was back, I think, in twenty fifteen. So we used those as the original like, that included districts such as Union, Dare, it was based on a number of different factors. Some of that was demographics, but not all of it. Some of it was how much local funding came into the district. Some of it was based on a number of different categories. That's what we began in the Planning Accountability Research Office, we go, if we're, if we're doing that comparison from a finance, let's do the same from the academic side too.
Okay, but that's ten years ago, hasn't that changed?
Well, it has, it has changed. And several of these districts, based off of this board, had that conversation with us maybe two years ago, and said, can we do some additional analysis and make sure that we're as close as we can be? It's hard to find districts that are just like us. It's, it's just hard to find them. So you're finding districts that are as close as you can based on categories. And so that's when Lincoln and Polk were out of the thing.
Burke, Craven, Dare, and Lincoln were at it.
Were at it, that was similar to us. Union was dropped, for example, because they have become more of a bedroom community. Charlotte, a little larger, and so they were dropped. So we've made changes then, based on that analysis at the board's request, maybe two years ago.
Okay, so you said demographics, gi- give me another example.
Student membership. Number of students, number of schools, the demographics, as well as the finance piece was looking at local funding and budget years ago.
I guess the, the question is, um, you know, a casual observer would think, wow, you know, you kind of handpicked it. And I'm not saying we did this, but you know, the criticism would be, you know, if I picked the sample, you know, I'd look pretty good, depending on who you're standing next to. So, um, why do we not do this statewide and why do we not do it?
We do do it statewide and we do.
That was the first part, okay.
We do it statewide and we do it by our region, the Sandhills region, and then like districts that are, so we try to look at it in three different ways.
Yeah, thank you. And again, I walked in the middle of this, so I was trying to catch up on here. So, so it's state and then geographical region and like, thank you very much.
And that's, that's the, that's our context information that we try to, uh, cause data just in isolation doesn't give us a lot of information. So how are we doing versus the state? You know, in the state of North Carolina, how do we do in our region? And then for districts that are somewhat like us, how do we compare? So that's, that's kind of the, where this came from and why we reported out.
Also, you, you guys said, um, there was one statistic, ten out of one fifteen, okay? And then you go down to forty-first out of one fifteen. What were the, I'm, I'm confused.
Ten, ten was grade level proficiency, that overall composite grade level proficiency. The forty-four.
Is ACT.
Is ACT.
Was simply ACT.
Yes, correct.
ACT in isolation.
All right.
That's a, that's a ACT, that's unacceptable.
No, I, 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 I get it, but that's only ACT.
Yes.
So, out of all the one hundred and fifteen LEAs, we rank number ten in proficiency, is that correct?
That's correct.
In grade level proficiency. I mean, that's not bad, I just think it's very, very, very good.
And tremendous improvement over a four, five-year period of time, continually trending in that direction, a positive direction.
And isn't that, although I don't want to steal your thunder, uh, isn't that, uh, a good accomplishment on our strategic plan?
I will share that, it is, we're moving in the right direction on the strategic plan. Of course, the, the board's strategic plan, and I'll say this later, was bold expectations, strong, high expectations. And so we're moving in that positive trend toward that, yes.
Okay.
Continue.
Thank you. So the graduation rate, this is the state comparison, so this is where we're comparing ourselves to the, the rest of the state, the one hundred and fifteen districts. As noted in the first chart, Moore County Schools ranking for graduation rate in the state is twenty-nine out of one hundred and fifteen districts. The graduation rate has decreased from previous years, however, we are still slightly higher than the state average. So you'll see the state average there is eighty-six point nine, and our graduation rate is eighty-nine point eight.
Can we pause there for just a second? Because I think it's very important that we point out that it's not, what did you, what's the percentage, can we go back?
Or, this is the state one.
Mm-hmm. You want eighty-six, well, we are at eighty-nine percent.
Eighty-nine point eight.
That does not mean that eleven percent of children are not graduating. It means that we have eleven percent of children that may start at ninth grade and get held back at either ninth, tenth, eleventh, or twelfth grade, and not graduate on time, which is counted in that figure right there. So please do not misunderstand that we have eleven percent of children not graduating, cause that is not what we're saying.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm passionate about that, can you?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Let me, let me say this, and I just walked in when they were talking about the year-over-year graduation comparison. And I noted that it decreased a little bit. And, you know, when you, when you enforce standards and you enforce discipline, then, you know, the graduation rate may have, may decrease a little bit. But perhaps it should have been lower all along because standards may not have been enforced, and discipline certainly wasn't enforced. So, uh, I will just leave it at that.
Okay, so looking at our regional comparison, um, so again, this includes our, within our region, our Sandhills region, is Anson, Bladen, Columbus, Cumberland, Harnett, Hope, Lee, Moore, Robinson, Richmond, Sampson, Scotland counties, and then Whiteville City Schools. We are ranked number two behind Bladen County Schools, um, again, at eighty-nine point eight percent. And then with our like districts, so the comparison of our like districts, which include those nine counties, um, we are ranked as number four, but also above the like district average for graduation rate.
Okay, so that's our context, I'll finish it up by just summarizing and just to quickly go through the board's strategic plan. This is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, two-year Moore County Schools strategic plan. I think we had seven goals that we'll quickly review. Again, this plan is up for review, I think the plan is to do that after the new board members are brought on. So sometime in the second semester, we look forward to working with the board to update the strategic plan for the next two years. If you can click that, so goal one was to increase the number of schools meeting or exceeding growth from fourteen to twenty-three. We are currently at seventeen, so we've moved from fourteen to seventeen, but not yet at that goal of twenty-three schools, all of our schools meeting or exceeding growth. Again, I think the, uh, on purpose and much appreciated, uh, the board's goals were, um, uh, very bold. And that was on purpose, we're gonna strive, these are reach goals, uh, each one of these were reach goals. And so we have strived to move from fourteen to twenty-three in terms of meeting or seeing growth, we're at seventeen schools that have. The second goal was to increase the overall composite grade level proficiency by ten percentage points from fifty-six point six percent to sixty-six point six percent. We've increased each year, uh, but we are at sixty-two point four percent, so just shy of our goal of sixty-six point six in two years. Goal three was the context ranking for the grade level proficiency from twenty-third to at least the top five percent out of the one hundred and fifteen LEAs. My math tells me that if we were at the top five percent, we would be number six, number six. That's what my math tells me. And we have increased it from, um, you know, twenty-three to ten. So that is a very positive trend, each year we've shown great improvement. But not, have not met that reach goal of number six. Goal four is, uh, increase the number of 10th grade students reading at above grade level as measured by the, and of course, Lexile reading level by ten percentage points. We wanted to move from eighty-one percent to ninety-one percent, and, um, we are at eighty-two percent, dropped a little bit as we talked about before. Eighty-two percent of our English Two students are reading at or above grade level. Goal five is all about the achievement gap, that was, uh, the board was very passionate. We will develop a strategic plan about the achievement gap and trying to reduce that achievement gap. And that was, uh, trying to reduce it by ten percentage points in each of the subgroup areas that are noted there. It's a tough one because we have seen, uh, definitely seen that their composite scores have gone up, but they so have the overall group. And so that gap hasn't necessarily been shrunk. So even though the students by percentage are doing better, the gap may stay the same. And so that's, again, worth looking for, it's just a very challenging goal, uh, because in essence, the subgroups would have to, have to gain a double or triple to try to reduce that than the overall group. And so mathematically, it's just a difficult challenge. And so you can see there in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, as Kate shared earlier, you know, how each of the subgroups is done in proficiency, and then to the right, the gap compared to where we were in twenty-one and twenty-two. Goal six was increase the number of students who completed a career technical education cluster. Students taking at least four career courses within the same career pathway is what we mean by cluster. We wanted to move it by fifteen percent over that two-year period from four hundred and forty-one to five-ten. At the end of this past year, we were at five-fifteen, so we have achieved that particular reach goal, which is wonderful. And goal seven, the final goal, was to decrease the number of districts with a school performance grade of an F from two to zero. We have one F school, um, we have one F-rated school, that's Aberdeen Elementary this particular year. So we've dropped it from two to one. Last year, we had zero, unfortunately, we're at one. We'll be talking more about that when we talk about the school improvement, uh, plans and the work of the particular schools here in a couple of weeks. We have two low performing schools, again, you, you are fully aware of this, we briefed on this, Aberdeen Elementary School and Robbins Elementary School. We'll share their plans moving forward at school improvement meetings. There are some areas we need to focus on, we've kind of highlighted a little bit. Obviously, uh, we want to continue to work on that gap, particularly with our black students, our students with disability, and our economically disadvantaged students. Again, it's a very difficult goal, uh, but we need to focus on that and drive that, that work will continue. Concerned about Math Three, we talked a little bit, had, had some good conversation here about that drop in Math Three. Felt better about Math One this past year, we really have put some focus into that. We're gonna need to do that with Math Three too, cause we've had a bit of a drop there. Kind of continue to work with those low performing schools. Graduation rate, um, the great thing about graduation rate is we can identify right down to the name of the student of who is not graduating in those four years. How many of those graduated in five years or six years, where they are now. We track that, um, so we're really able to get real data on what we might be missing. And I, I think particularly, uh, with Ms. Phillips and Pinecrest, Pinecrest High School, when she speaks to the board in a couple of weeks, she'll be talking about how they're addressing that and some of the challenges they've had with graduation, right? But they'll be, be able to focus on that very specifically. And then ACT, ACT is unacceptable for us to be below the state. I think it's the only area where we're below the state, um, and that is not acceptable. Trying to get our arms around that, we're doing some training. ACT offers some additional training that we're sending a team to, uh, to gain a little bit of knowledge. Can't really put our finger on it, it's a very different test than our end-of-the-year test for our high school students. It's just a very difficult, or very different kind of. It's just a very difficult, a very different kind of, you know, exam and assessment. And so, we're trying to get our fingers around that a little bit. It's hard, just in that analysis period of time, it's just hard for me to be able to say this is what I think the issue is with ACT. We're working on that. We're working on that.
Are there no preta, I'm sorry to interrupt. Are there no pre-test for that to, to give the children an opportunity to see what it is, how, the difference, difference of it?
There is, there is a pre-ACT that's given to all tenth grade students.
Yeah.
And so, they do use that. A lot of the schools will use that to kind of guide exposure to the test for, for partial of that, and part of also that is to help them identify individual student needs. So, there is a pre-assessment of that pre-ACT in tenth grade.
Also, our, our, our proficiency seems to be gaining and is well above the state, or certainly above the state, yet the ACT test isn't performing that well. Could it be that it's the test? And the, the question is, are we worrying about the test for the test's sake, which might not be the greatest place to put our efforts? Because we would look, we want to look at proficiency, and the proficiency, we're doing well, and that's our goal. So, I'm wondering whether it's, the, the, the test itself is not measuring proficiency well. I don't know. Have you thought about that?
Absolutely. We, we do know, as I, as I mentioned, it's a very different kind of assessment. The two are not similar, and so, perhaps our students are very well-prepared for the, and of course, exams, and not as prepared for that kind of assessment. But that assessment is important for some of our students. It's very important for other students. It has limited meaning, but for many of our students, it's very important. So, we don't want to not, you know, provide the support for our students in taking that assessment. So, we've got to figure it out. And I've got great, I've got great faith, faith in our high school, school improvement teams. I've got great faith in Donna and her team, and we're putting our energy into that as one of our areas of focus, going, okay, what are we not doing with ACT? Well, how are we not supporting our students that we need to? One example, small example, but that is an assessment that's taken paper and pencil rather than taking online. Now, in my day, I would say that was an advantage. I might prefer to take it paper and pencil than online, but today's students are taking many or most of their assessments online or on the computer. So, perhaps it is a disadvantage rather than advantage. I'm not saying it is, but that is something for the team to consider as well, and I think we're moving.
We are moving towards that being an online assessment next year.
Yeah, I think we're required to move that toward an online assessment next year and prepare our students for that. So, maybe, these are unknowns that we need to investigate and have conversation about.
Just as a quick reminder, context, reminder to the board, the ACT is required by the state of North Carolina as part of the high school accountability model. All of our high school juniors take it, whether they're intending to go to the college or not.
Yeah.
All of our high school juniors take that assessment, which is where that data comes back from. And so, yes, this is not acceptable. We're going to continue to look at how we better prepare our students for this, and you also want to do that in such a way where it's benefiting them overall. It's not just preparing for the ACT and just for the ACT's sake. You know, how can we better prepare them to perhaps attack writing in a better way, which also benefits other subjects? How can we help them attack some of those critical thinking skills and comparisons that they have to do on that ACT, which can benefit them in other ways? So, we just don't want to do it in a vacuum of, we just want to do better on the ACT.
Correct.
I think that's what our team will be looking at and analyzing.
Question, how are we defining proficiency?
On which assessment?
I'm sorry?
On which assessment?
Any assessment.
On the ACT.
What, what constitutes proficiency?
We use the state measures of proficiency. So, for the ACT, the UNC Systems Benchmark for Minimum ACT Score is a nineteen, and so that's the proficiency mark that the state uses. So, for the ACT, it's a score of nineteen, for the composite score. For general, or for the grade level proficiency, we use the state measure of level three, four, or five on the assessment.
I'm trying to straighten up my mind. What, what are the elements of proficiency?
So, I would say that the best way to describe it based on the state's definition is on grade level. So, is it, are students at the appropriate grade level for the assessment that they're taking? So, if you're taking a fifth grade, grade level based on how all students perform across the state, this is what they have said is grade level proficiency for fifth grade, and so that's the measure that they're using.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead. You guys, you guys have some others? Okay, we've got questions.
Questions?
All right. Let, let me just get down to the chase. I'm real concerned about the African-American students. It's one of the things I've pointed out many, many times, and you've also pointed out here, which is now really obvious. If you want to know the level of achievement of African-American students, you take the overall achievement level and you cut it in half. That's just clearly unacceptable. Not, not, I'm not, I'm not criticizing you guys. Don't, don't get me wrong. It's unacceptable in education overall, okay? And we've got to find a solution for that. What are we doing, or maybe that's, that's an unfair question? How can, how can we seek an answer to this question? Because it seems to me that we could be once again losing another generation, or at least half of a generation, and that is very, very scary to me. Is, is, is there something, are there school districts which, which are successful in this sort of a thing, where, who we can learn from? Or is it some intractable, intract, intract, some impossible problem that's maybe too big for our system? I don't know, but I'm not willing to give up, to, to, to give up the fight. It's, 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 it's very, very disturbing to me.
Yeah, I'm not willing to give up the fight either, and I appreciate you saying that. We're focusing on it. I think it's a tremendous challenge. I think that our data in subgroup gaps mirrors the state. I think it mirrors nationwide. I'm not sure there is a silver bullet, you know, do this program and that problem goes away. I would say that's not the case. I do think, and I think again, you know, we'll talk in more detail with individual schools as they share what their gaps are at their particular school, what their challenges are, and how they're facing that. I do think it's about individualization with that particular student. Our schools know those students in each of those areas, and what am I doing for that particular student? It's really about individual student gains when you get right down to it. It's not necessarily about this wider group. And I think our schools will share that, but there is no silver bullet. There is no immediate answer. This is what we need to do. All the work that we're doing is about student proficiency and student performance and, and moving students forward. So, when Donna brings forward something like a RICA math, it's about all the students, but that's impacting our subgroups as well. It's not just about the all, or just about the white students, about those individual students as well.
All right. I hope, I, I, I hope when we get to the school improvement programs, each one of our schools, especially the ones that do show an education gap like this, can address that particular subject. I would be very interested to hear about that for school improvement programs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, other questions by members of the board?
Yeah, I have some.
Yes.
So, first of all, you know, historically, I've always asked for the reason for the achievement gap, and no one will ever answer it. Everybody nibbles around the edges, but going into my fourth year looking into this, I have to question whether the achievement gap metric is something we should even be looking at for a couple of reasons. One is oddly enough, although it's completely opposite of his point that the chair was trying to make, it seems to be intractable. You know, it's a statewide problem. It's a nationwide problem. It's a societal problem, and we cannot cure all of society's ills, and we just can't do it. We can put tremendous amounts of time, resources, and money into solving something that's a societal, cultural issue, or we can invest time, effort, and money into raising all boats, because again, we see this year the exact same thing we've seen in previous years. We see the tide rising, and we see the gap staying the same. The key is we're educating everyone better. And look, I can't explain the oppor, or I won't explain the opportunity gap. No one else in this room will explain the opportunity gap, but the point is, a rising tide lifts all boats. It appears that it's lifting all boats equally. There's just a gap between the boats, and, you know, a school cannot solve all society and cultural ills. The other thing I would point out about the opportunity gap is academia loves, and government loves, to create these arbitrary subgroups. Oh, well, let's look at the opportunity gap. Let's look at the achievement gap between African-Americans and the general population. Let's look at Hispanics and the general population. Let's look at, you know, whatever in the gen, well, what about male versus the general population? What about female versus the population? What about left-handed people versus the, the general population? You know, this is really just identity politics, and the, and the subgroups are arbitrarily selected for political reasons. So, I think we need to put, and I would say this in the next strategic plan, we need to put more emphasis on lifting all boats and less emphasis on creating artificial subgroups and micromanaging them. So, that's my thought of four years of sitting here and listening to subgroups, because, you know, I've heard it all. You know, I've heard people stand up here and testify in front of the board, or, you know, their couple of comment, "Students can't possibly learn unless the teacher looks like them." Okay, well, explain how we have fifty percent male students and ninety-five percent female students. No one ever talks about, you know, what about male students and the fact that the teachers don't look like them? It's all just excuses. It's all just arbitrary, putting people into groups, and as long as we are, as long as our tide is lifting all boats and we're increasing the education of every student, that is one hundred percent what we should put our focus into, and the chips fall where they may. Doesn't mean we don't try, doesn't mean we don't put some effort in here, but we put a ridiculous amount of effort into it. But overall, I was asked this question just the other day. I was asked by prominent people. So, what's your assessment of Moore County Schools? And I will say this, academically, Moore County Schools is exactly where we need to be, and the credit to that is due to Dr. Locklear, Dr. Metcalf, Ms. Gephardt, the administrators, and the teachers. We, you know, we got rid of all the barriers. We got rid of the misguided thinking where critical race theory and, you know, disincentives to education. We got rid of all the barriers to education that were in the previous strategic plan, and instead, we focused on a rewarding academic excellence. We reinstated valedictorians, slutorians. We got rid of, we got rid of ineffective or ideologically-driven administrators, and they were replaced to a person with focused, education, results-oriented people. So, and then Dr. Metcalf, under Dr. Locklear, and Ms. Gephardt, and everybody in the central office, you know, we've got phonics in place. We've got, we've got a new math program. So, academically, we have the programs in place that we need. We just have to get them, give them time. There are two things that this board needs to do, right? The two most important things that this board needs to do is to give credit where credit is due, and as I said, that is the people involved in academics in the central office, the program they put together, the administrators at the schools who are making it happen, and the teachers. So, the first thing is, we got to make sure that we're giving credit where credit is due, and it ain't us, it's these guys. Secondly, we need to get the hell out of the way. We need to stop micromanaging. We need to stop telling books. The best thing that we can do, the academics, we are right on the glide path. You saw that. We're number one in some stuff. We're in the top eight percent. We're in the top eight percent statewide. These guys know what they're doing. The best thing for this school board to do is get out of the way and let the professionals do their thing. Now, there are many other areas that the school board needs to focus on. We need to focus on the business functions. We need to focus on construction. We need to focus on, we need to focus on budgeting. We need to focus on school security. There's all kinds of business-oriented things that we need to focus on, but academics is not something that we need to micromanage because these guys are doing the right things. They got the right people in place, and we are one hundred percent headed the correct direction, and they deserve the credit, not us.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further? Okay, what I'd like to do is take about a five-minute break at this point, because I need one. I don't know about anybody else. So, we'll stand recess. So we'll stand recess. Okay, coming back into session. Yeah, Mr. Ansley, you want to say something?
Uh, I'm just wondering, you know, as everyone knows, I was away for about 40 minutes. So what's the plan on come circling, knock around?
I was just talking to Dr. Locklear. Uh, we'll go ahead with the, uh, with B and C and then talk about the police, uh, right after C, if that's okay.
Okay, sure. Yeah. So we're going to finish up three, C, and then, yep, got it.
Just before the committee reports. Okay. So, um, so let's go to the 24, 25, day 20 report. Dr. Locklear.
Yes, sir. Historically, uh, in October, uh, we update the board on where, where we are with student membership as of day 20 in the school district. That's our point in time that we compare each year, uh, where we're coming in with student membership. And so I've got a little information to share about that with the board. As I said earlier, we're about 85 more students than we were at day 20 last year. Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Fall.
Again, you know, sharing the thunder, taking our thunder, Dr. Locklear. Yes, 85 students, Ms. Fall.
So we have 85 more students than we did last year. Um, these are self-reported numbers. Our official numbers will not be finalized until next week. But our unofficial numbers, uh, which are self-reported, come up to 13,016 students across all of our schools, which is an increase of 85 students over last year's same-point-in-time self-reported number. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you the schools. Um, and I'm just going to give you a moment to look over them. So these are your elementary schools. The first column is where they currently stand. The second column is where they were the same time last year. And then the third column is the change. So you would see a negative number if they've gone down in size and a positive up. A lot of the ones in the elementary school are due to kindergarten and fifth grade. So, and the reason for that is you, you might have a large class leaving fifth to go to sixth, and you might have a small kindergarten number coming in. It is not uncommon for most of these schools to see a large fluctuation in kindergarten numbers. So, uh, just so that you can see where we stand.
Other than, uh, other than Aberdeen and McDeed's Creek, these seem counterintuitive to the growing areas of our county.
Hold that thought. Um, this is our middle school numbers. And there would be that Southern Middle and West Pine numbers. Um, so sometimes the middle school, again, the fifth grade going to sixth grade might be a larger class. So that can sometimes balance that out a little bit. I also want to point out that it is not uncommon for these numbers to shift throughout the year. Particularly at some of our schools, we have a, a large contingent of students that come in and out of the school system. So it would not be uncommon for this number to be different if we were to look at it 60 days down the road. And then here are your high schools and your alternative and virtual, or sorry, Connect Academy, no longer virtual, Connect Academy. Um, I do want to point out, Connect Academy, in the past, we've just combined it all together, um, in terms of the blended program and the virtual program. But because of, um, how we manage those schools, we decided to split it out this year. So I just wanted to point out that that's actually 284 comparative to 303. So we split it out this past year.
Is it fair to say there could be a, a good deal of fluctuation in them as well?
Um, in those bottom three, yes. It is not uncommon for those to see large fluctuations. Now, Connect Academy, uh, those fluctuations tend to happen at semester, whereas, uh, Community Learning Center seems to see fluctuation throughout the year. Um, so, uh, when you look at this over time, keeping in mind that 18, 19 was the last pre-pandemic year. So we've included that so that you can see the trend in recovery. Um, you will see that we have been slowly increasing. Last year was slightly down, but we've been slowly increasing back up from the pandemic. And we are currently at 13,016 students as of day 20. And day 20 was last week. So, are there any questions or discussion?
Questions by members of the board? Okay. Yes, go, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, did I, did I, where did I miss? The fluctuations were kind of counterintuitive to, uh, to what I would think.
I was just making sure that we saw the middle school numbers in there as well. I just wanted to make sure.
I just, it just seems odd that, you know, Pinehurst Elementary and West End Elementary and West Pine Elementary would have real number, and Carthage would have real number decreases. Uh, and Westmore increases as an example. I just, how do you explain the, uh, 5% decrease at Pinehurst Elementary and a, and a, uh, an 8% decrease at West End and a 5%? So West Pine, West End, and Pinehurst Elementary all had around 5% decreases, 3 to 8% decreases.
All three of the schools you just mentioned do have a particularly smaller incoming kindergarten class. If you look at the 10-year trend for most of these school, most of the schools that have larger numbers on here, both up and down, you'll see that over the 10-year, looking at their kindergarten numbers, there just tends to be a huge fluctuation in kindergarten numbers. So they might have four classes one year and three the next, and then four, five the next year. So the kindergarten numbers tend to fluctuate, uh, which is just part of the general population. So both West End and West Pine have specifically lower kindergarten classes. And they had a particularly larger fifth grade class that moved on to the middle school. So that contributes to that. Whereas those fifth grade kids then would go to West Pine. And as the, uh, the West Pine numbers were up 51%, so, or 51 students, so.
So, um, so do you think that that's indicative of first grade enrollment next year from that same cohort? Do you think the shrinkage of the 5% decrease in kindergartens are going to result in a 5% decrease in first grade?
Most often, that is what we see, yes. We'll see, when you look at, uh, every single grade level at some of those schools, you'll see big fluctuations between grade levels because of that exact reason. The numbers don't necessarily gain over time. They're pretty consistent.
Okay. So let's, uh, let's talk about this real quick. So, uh, one thing I want to point out, just so everybody understands, our overcrowding is at the high school level. Our high schools are horribly overcrowded. But our, if you look at the utilization, I'm talking utilization. If you look at the utilization of our elementary and middle schools, they're not overcrowded. In most cases, we have excess capacity. And the reason for that is due to competition from private schools, charter schools, and homeschooling. And most charter schools and most private schools do not have high schools. And a lot of homeschooling parents decide for many reasons, you know, activity, maturity, to let their children attend high schools. So, um, that just, it's just kind of background information, fun facts that, uh, you know, we, we compete a lot with private schools, charter schools, um, in, uh, middle and elementary school, and almost no competition with high schools. So, uh, think about that. Uh, I do want to put the numbers into perspective. And if we could put the second to the last slide up, uh, not that one. Yeah. No, next one, the very last slide.
Sorry.
Yeah, right there. Okay, just to put this into perspective. From, in the last seven years, from 2018 to 2019 to this year, that's 2, 4, 6. In seven years, we've gained a total of 229 students. That's a 1.7% growth over seven years. That's not 1.7% per year. That's a total growth rate of 1.7% over seven years, or 229 students. That is 32 students a year, or 2/10 of 1% growth per year. So it's less than 1%. It's 2/10 of 1% growth per year. That's all I just want to put in perspective. I, I have no analysis of it other than those two little factoids.
I have, um, just a comment. It's going to be, um, interesting to see in the next coming years of the population because of the housing, the houses that are being built in Aberdeen, as you saw. Um, Aberdeen, Carthage is having a huge influx in housing. And Vass Lakeview is having a huge influx in housing. So it'd be interesting to see what those numbers do, how they affect next year as well, um, due to our population in, in the housing market. So it's just a comment. I just kind of was thinking about it as I'm seeing all those. And you can kind of see where, where each one is kind of growing a little bit too. So, um, anyhow, it's just a little real estate analogy that I have in my head.
The surprising part, if you could go to the high school part, please. Um, the surprising part was the decrease in Northmore and Pinecrest. That, that is shocking because, you know, the reason I say that, Stacy, is because, look, the huge, a huge increase in populations already occurred. They just have more choices, right? We all know that. But the fact that the popu, that the high school decreased a little bit, that's, uh, that's, that's very interesting and not what I would expect. I, I would say though, that the way, you know, because I was asked this question too by distinguished people, is, hey, so how do you fix this market share? And we've discussed this as a board. The way you fix this is, and that's what we're doing, is we make more county schools the best choice. And academically, we're on that road to hopefully making more county schools the best choice.
One, one of the other things that I hope we think about, um, is, uh, when we look at Northmore and the under-utilization of Northmore. I had talked to you, Dr. Metcalf, um, about looking for next, uh, next academic year into allowing some of our students in Pinehurst, the Pinehurst area, the west, I believe it's West End area as well, uh, if they should so desire, instead of going to Pinecrest, to go to Northmore. And to look at the possibility of putting a bus, uh, with a community pickup at, um, at, or near, uh, the corner of Highway 5. And, um, uh, Highway 5 and, uh, the, uh, I always call the Pinecroft Shopping Center, or whatever. It's the Harris Teeter Shopping Center. Allowing some of our students, uh, who might want to go to a less crowded high school, uh, from the Pinehurst area and from the, uh, West End, Seven Lakes area to attend Northmore, should they so desire. I don't know whether there would be a, um, uh, a, a desire to do that, okay? But it is one way to look at overcrowding as a ver, fairly inexpensive way to help lower the overcrowding at, uh, at Pinecrest. Um, just as a thought. It's not, uh, not a, um, not a hard and fast thing, but maybe we want to look at it. Okay. Um, anything else? All right. Moving right along, as they say. Uh, school improvement requirements and processes and procedures. Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Uh, as the board is aware, uh, in a couple of weeks, um, our schools that are up for renewal of their school improvement plans, uh, will be presenting their plans to the board, uh, the principals as representatives of their school improvement teams that are at their schools that consist of their teachers, teacher leaders, includes instructional assistants, parents, um, as members of that team developing a plan. And now they're going to share how they're going to work that plan. And they're going to present that to you here in a couple of weeks, which is an annual thing, that the board receives those plans and then consequently approves those plans after listening and asking questions, et cetera. Uh, we did think it was, it was important for the board to get briefed, reminded of the process that we use in more county schools uh, for school improvement processes and procedures. Uh, you've often heard me say, and Mike and others, uh, that this is part of the MCS way. We have systems and processes and frameworks that we've developed over years that are part of the Moore County Schools way that are non-negotiable. This is how we do business. And one of those ways that I'm, one of those components, one of those frameworks that I'm awfully proud of is the framework we've built over time with our principals and teachers and staff for school improvement. And it's focused on continuous improvement each and every year. Uh, so, um, Mike and Heather and Jamie are going to share a summary of, of that process and how we work that process, and then what you can expect, uh, here in a couple of weeks at the special meetings for school improvement review. Additionally, after your adjourn today, each board member will receive a notebook that has, uh, the summary presentation from those, from those, uh, the draft presentation of what you'll see in a couple of weeks, as well as each individual plan. So you actually get that now, so you have time. You have a couple of weeks to be able to review that. And we'll, we'll be assigning you a couple of homework assignments with that. Uh, I'll let Dr. Metcalf be the one who assigns that. I always give him the fun work. Uh, but we'll be giving you a couple of homework assignments with that. Essentially, if you have questions, get them to Dr. Metcalf. But, uh, uh, you know, we wanted to make sure you had time to review that uh, prior to those meetings, that you didn't just walk in and get the plans that day. So, Dr. Metcalf, Ms. Stewart, Ms. Sine, and I'll turn it over to you guys.
So now that you've talked about the homework assignment, we can all go home for the day. Thunder stolen once again. Appreciate it. Yeah, we're very proud of the work we've done in the Moore County way. We're looking forward to October 22nd and 23rd when our schools whose rotation is up get the opportunity to present to the board uh, what they've done well and what they're focusing on and how they're going to focus on those, uh, those particular areas. We wanted to just give a briefing to you about school improvement, about our processes, what drives that, what it looks like, and kind of set that up, uh, for those two days, the 22nd and the 23rd. So we can start with what is school improvement. Uh, of course, uh, it starts with the school and their school improvement team doing a thorough and complete comprehensive needs assessment. Uh, they're looking at that everything from student achievement to student culture to student, uh, discipline, the environment, uh, what the need- uh, what the needs are for their particular staff, staff turnover, um, what the needs are for their students, their staff, for their community. And from that needs assessment, then they're reaching a consensus of what is the highest priority for their school to work on over a two-year period. They then set timelines, they set the goals, they set the action steps, they set the targets throughout the two-year period that they're working toward, to see where they're at. They're constantly assessing, and they're constantly evaluating, and, um, some action steps are achieved, some are continual work. It is a, uh, living document. It's not a static document. It's the work of school improvement more than the document itself. Uh, and we'll share a little bit about that. We're guided by general statute. And so there's certain things that were required. First, uh, the school improvement team is elected by secret ballot, has to include administration, instructional personnel, uh, support personnel, instructional, support personnel, teachers assistants, and parents as well of students who are enrolled at the school. And they meet regularly, and open meeting laws apply. Anybody can come to those meetings. They're posted. Now, anybody is allowed to come and, and witness the work of the school improvement team as they do their analysis, their planning, and their work. Some additional things, that the school votes on the plan, so there's a process that, once the plan is complete and they've gotten feedback, feedback from the board, feedback from the community, they then have to vote to approve that plan. Uh, there is some consideration for school safety. We'll talk about that in a little bit. There is an effective period for the plan. Our plans are designed over a two-year period, so approximately half of our schools will be presenting to you on the twenty-second and twenty-third. The other schools are going into the second year of their two-year timeline. And there's, there's other things that are required to be in there. We try to, uh, eliminate unnecessary plans and some compliance as well. Uh, we also have board policy. We also have Bob Board Policy, thirty-four thirty, uh, that provides some requirements as well. For example, it has to be held at convenient locations, to be as open and facilitate parent engagement as much as possible. Uh, it has to be aligned to the Moore County Schools District Strategic Plan, current strategic plan. It must be data-driven, uh, must have that comprehensive needs assessment, as I talked about before. Must have, uh, perception, demographic, and process data points, and I think you'll see that throughout each of the plans that are presented. Um, and have to use, uh, effective instructional practices and methods, uh, that are designed and are data-proven to increase proficiency and growth rates across student groups. Uh, there are some roles and responsibilities that you as a school board have as well, uh, that are required as a part of general statute. You are required to ensure that each principal has established a school improvement team by reviewing the school improvement plans each year. Uh, we do that. Not every district does what we do. We do that by having our, our principals come and speak directly to you and share their plans. You're to work with the superintendent or the superintendent's designee to direct and support principals to develop and implement effective school improvement plans. So I think, uh, you're, you're there to support them as they put these into place. Um, and you have a responsibility to both review the plans, but also provide any feedback, and then ultimately to approve or direct their school plans. Feedback is the key piece. And, uh, Dr. Locklear, once again stole my thunder earlier, but we will ask for you, uh, to do that in advance as much as possible so that we can give that information to our principals, so that they can bring you a plan that's a little bit farther down the road than they might otherwise. And so that's really helpful for them, uh, if you take the time over the next several weeks to take a look at the plans. And we'll provide that all at the end. So school improvement in action. I think I'm handing over to, uh, Ms. Sine.
You are. Oh, the school's safe.
Um, you said compliance with requirements. Tell me what exactly, does that mean compliance with our policies? Is that what requirements need, needs? Okay.
And don't our lower-performing schools have to come back to us yearly? Uh, as you said, every other year, but our lower-performing schools have to come back.
Yes, we bring our low-performing back, schools back, our two-low performing schools that we have right now, but we would bring our low-performing schools back every year, each year, uh, so that the board can see where they're at and gets a briefing on that. Thank you, Mr. Levy.
Um, I have another question. Um, uh, being in the schools, which I think Mr. Benway and I are going to start, start again after this, um, what, what if we see some, something that is not in compliance with the requirements or not to the extent that it's supposed to be? Do we address that on that day, or do we address that?
No, I think we have a policy that would direct you to bring that to the superintendent, and then the superintendent would direct that in the way that he sees fit. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Uh, do you want to hear one more thing about the school, uh, safety plans? Of course, as a part of this is the school safety plans. Much of that information, as you know, is confidential. Uh, so that will be brought to, uh, a closed session, October fifteenth during closed session. We'll be sharing those plans with you, um, but give you time to review those, to take them with you. You'll have the opportunity to review them, and then they'll be voted on at the same time that we do the school improvement plans in November. But you have that opportunity. We can discuss them further with any ideas, concerns that you have in the closed session in November. So we've got some time there for you to be able to do that. All right, now, Ms. Sine.
All right, so we're going to talk about school improvement, uh, in action. So effective school improvement is made up of these things that you see in this bulleted list. Um, we want to make sure that there is constant data analysis, that we're always looking at the data and making decisions based on the data. What is it that we need to do next? Um, when we say collaborative planning, this is the school improvement team that are planning together, the school that's planning together. This is not a principal plan. It is not a Dr. Metcalf plan. It is not a central office plan. It is a school plan. Um, so they work together as a team to develop that plan. Um, of course, the MCS way, um, we want to make sure that we are doing that to fidelity, that that's the expectation across the district, is that schools are following the MCS way. Um, and we'll talk just a little bit more about that in a few slides. Um, the monitoring and adjustment practices, like was said earlier, excuse me, this is a living document. So as we collect additional data, as that's analyzed, um, then we're going to make change, or the schools are going to make changes to those plans, um, maybe changes to some action items based on what they've seen. If they're progressing, then we're going to go ahead and like jump it up just a little bit. Um, if we're not getting the results that we're looking at, maybe we need to adjust and do something a little bit different. And then all of those pieces work together to move the needle forward. We want to continue to grow, just as we do with the strategic plan that the board provides. Um, we want to make sure that the schools are doing the same thing, that they have those things in place so that they can continue to move forward.
Jamie, just to, want to add something there. Uh, maybe you can just, just brief on it. Maybe the public or even some board members might not know what that team, um, consists of. So that school improvement team, when you, um, meet, when they meet.
Right, so can we go back a few, are you going to talk about, because that was in?
Oh, is it in one of those? I went, I jumped ahead. Okay, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. Um, okay, so, thank you. Um, so the plans are aligned to the, uh, Moore County Schools District Strategic Plan. What they put in those plans, we need to make sure that they are aligned to what the strategic plan is for the district. It's a two-year plan, but like we said, the, um, the low-performing schools, they, they go ahead and present every single year. All the other schools do, um, a two-year plan. Again, they can make changes as they see necessary, based on their data or as appropriate. It's a living document. It is not something that is just typed up and then placed on the shelf, and we look at it two years later. It's looked at consistently. Um, all of the action steps, all of the goals, everything that's done within that school improvement plan is data-driven. Um, so it's not just, I just have an idea, so we're going to go ahead and go with this. It's based on the data. So they're looking at multiple data pieces. They have SMART goals with actionable steps, so, um, the goals that they put in place, we want to make sure that those are SMART goals. Um, there's a secret ballot vote, um, by all the schools' teachers, staff, and parent representatives, um, once the plan is developed. And then all of our plans, you can see on the website. They are part of NC Star, every, and Heather will talk about this, I think, a little bit, um, about the NC Star plan, um, but everybody can, can review that. Ms. Bruno, I heard you say secret ballot. Why is it secret ballot?
Required by law.
Yep.
What's, what's in a politician's mind over the legislature? We never know.
It's, this is one of those where the general somebody says that.
I think the premise might be, Ms. Bruno, that this is, this is not done by showing a hand. This is done by, you know, voting on a piece of paper so I can feel safe to say, no, I don't support the plan, or I do support the plan. I think that was probably their thinking, but from my perspective as the superintendent, but, uh, it's been that way for decades.
I, I, I think there was, at, at one point, there was some concern that people would be afraid to vote against what the principal wanted, and they wanted this to be an all-inclusive, uh, vote, and, uh, that people could vote their mind or their conscience without worrying about how the principal was going to, uh, view what they were saying or doing. I don't know that that was a legitimate concern at that point in time, or whether it is now, but that was the thinking behind that thing.
And quickly, while, while you, you've interjected, Ms. Bruno, I do want to point out what a SMART goal is. A SMART goal is a goal that's, oh, you, is that your next thing you're about to talk about?
No, but I have it right here, but you could.
Go ahead, Ms. Sine. Tell us what a SMART goal is.
Absolutely. Um, so, so a SMART goal is, um, the, it's an acronym, of course, because we love acronyms in education. Um, so the SMART goal is that it's specific. So it's a specific goal. It's not generalized. Um, it's measurable, so you've got to have those, those pieces in there that you can measure. So it's got, you've got to have some numbers in there. Um, it's attainable, so you're not saying that, you know, if we're, I, I can't even think. Attainable would be if we're going from this really small percentage to all of a sudden we want a hundred percent. Is that really attainable at, at this point? Um, when we look at our, it's realistic, a realistic goal. Um, and then the last one is, um, timely. So we want to make sure that there is that timely piece in there. Ours are for two years, um, so that you've got that endpoint where you can look at it and say, this is, we've either achieved this goal or we haven't. Dr. Locklear, was that what you were going to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and then we just have our slide on here about the Moore County Schools way, just as a reminder. Um, this is what guides all of our work. Um, we've got our, you know, the fidelity of the implementation and the assessment of impact. We want to make sure that we are putting these, these things in place to fidelity across the district. These are the expectations across every single school in Moore County. Um, we have our frameworks in place, professional learning teams. We talk a lot about our PLTs and that PLT process and what the expectation is during that time. We want to make sure that we are growing effective, engaging, and impactful lessons. Um, that what we are doing in the classroom is meaningful and impactful for students. The school improvement process is listed on there, and following those guidelines that we have in place um, for the school improvement process in Moore County schools. And then we want to make sure that we have effective, engaging, and impactful lessons that are happening within the schools. Um, and then you've got your dimensions of success. So when you have your systems and processes in place that we have in place with the Moore County Schools way, plus we have those relationships with our schools, with the central office, with our board, that's when we get those great outcomes that we expect. So how does Moore County Schools work the plan? You know, Dr. Locklear said that we, um, built the plan, we have the plan, but now we have to work the plan. It goes through a plan-do-study-act process, where we are planning the work, we are looking at what needs to be done, we are acting, we are looking at what the, um, what the data says, and then what are we going to do because of that data? So we've got just some examples of data that are listed there on the left-hand side. Of course, that's not all the data pieces that we look at. There's multiple pieces that we look at, but those are just some of those things. Um, if you take a look across the top, it just kind of gives a little bit of a timeline as far as what that, what that looks like. You know, the schools develop the plan, um, they review the, um, comprehensive needs assessment over the summer, and then they draft that plan, um, in September. Um, it's voted on by the school staff, and then we bring it to the, um, school board so that you guys can give feedback, and you can, and then the schools can make any changes and then have that approval. So we don't just throw the schools out there on their own and say, have a good time, enjoy, do your plan. Um, we provide a lot of support, um, as an academic and student support services team. Um, we've got that professional learning, so we give them that, the processes, we review that with them, the timeline. Um, we give them some strategies. How do you, how are you going to implement these action steps? Um, so we work with them on that, on, with the teams. Heather works with them a lot, with their teams and with the principals, to look at what action steps are appropriate for the goals that they're putting in place. Um, they review the data so that they can measure the progress, complete their comprehensive needs assessment. And then we also look at the facilitated assessment for MTSS. So MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support. So that is the framework that's in place for, um, looking at our stu, individual student needs. What is it that they need, and how do we go ahead and meet those needs? Putting interventions in place, um, looking at small groups, things like that. So they look at the data that they've collected from that process. Um, we also have a process, the process checks that Heather does with our, our schools. Um, we have a school improvement monthly meetings and retreats that we participate in as we need to. Um, there is ongoing support. Heather provides amazing support to our restart schools. Um, and our, our, our access team has commitments of support. So for our low-performing schools and our restart, restart schools, we discuss as a team, these are some things that we need to put in place to help support the administration at the school or support the schools. Um, so we have those commitments to those schools that are low-performing or restart schools to make sure that we're providing, um, what they need. Um, we provide written feedback on the NC Star plans to them, um, as adjustments need to be made. And then we also have a, um, school improvement timeline that we follow, so that it's kind of like a checklist. Like, this is the point where we're at. We need to make sure that these things are, are done.
If you ever take the time to check out that NC Star thing, you can get in the weeds so deep. It's, it's a lot of, uh, it's fun.
It's a lot of information. It is, it's great. All right, so then our, additionally, our district accountability practices. Um, the leadership goals are connected to the strategic plan. So what we do as a district, um, we make sure that what our leadership goals are, they're aligned to the strategic plan and the school improvement needs of the individual schools. Um, we have district leadership priorities that are developed. And again, those are based on the strategic plan, um, for the district, but we also look at specific strategies to target specific schools as needed. Um, the district leadership evaluations and goals, again, aligned to the strategic plan. Everything is connected so that we're all working in the same direction. We're all speaking the same, same language. Again, our principal evaluation is connected to the implementation of the school improvement plan. When Dr. Metcalf and I meet with principals, we are looking to make sure that the goals that they are setting for themselves are aligned to what is happening at the school, that it, they're not working on something completely different than what they're doing for school improvement. And then all school staff, um, connect their professional development plan, so all staff members have a professional development plan um, to the evaluation process and school improvement goals. So again, just to, just to show that everything is connected that we're doing in Moore County. Um, so there's multiple opportunities for focused discussions with the district teams, school improvement implementation, the successes, the challenges, um, making adjustments as we need to, our, um, again, our access team, our academic and student support services team, we collaborate together to look at what those commitments are going to be, looking at the, um, specific areas. So there may be certain things that Heather is working on with the schools, um, based on her areas of expertise. Ms. Gebhardt will be working on, you know, maybe some PLT practices within the schools. Um, but those are commitments that we're making, um, to make sure that we're providing that support that's needed. We have district walks, um, where our academic and student support services team goes around and walks the, walks the schools with the principals um, to see what's going on in classrooms and give feedback about what they're seeing in classrooms. Um, Dr. Locklear has leadership walks that he does with each one of our principals. Um, it's kind of like a walk and talk where they talk about the things that are happening at the school, what's great, what, what are some things that you need some support in. We have professional development for our principals and our assist, well, our principals monthly and then our assistant principals about every other month. We call it learning and leading, and it's focused professional development based on what the needs of the district are. Again, also aligned to the strategic plan, commitments of support, and the school improvement plan. Um, and then we also have restart retreats, so we have some more focused attention on our restart schools, low-performing schools, to make sure that we're meeting their needs, because their needs could be very different. to make sure that we're meeting their needs, because their needs could be very different than what the needs are at another school. Again, a lot of the same things that I was just sharing, looking at those professional learning teams. These are part of the Moore County Schools Way, professional learning teams, the multi-tiered systems of support, which looks at student outcomes, positive behavior intervention and support, which are those behaviors. What are those expectations that we have for students when they're at school? How should they behave? And then other school improvement committees. All of those committees that they have at the school are aligned to what's in their school improvement plan. So as they look at what those goals are that they're setting, they have those committees in place to help meet those goals and help to put action steps in place. So what is the role of the school improvement team? Again, Heather will talk about the team a little bit, but they're gonna analyze the implementation data and the progress. So that's what they're talking about at those school improvement team meetings. Again, those are open meetings. They are looking at, what are the things that we need? Do we need additional professional development? Is there coaching that we need? Is there any technical assistance, so that we can make sure that we're getting the outcomes that we need? They'll develop those monitoring plans to take a look at, you know, look at that progress monitoring. Okay, where do we need to be at this point? Again, the school improvement plan is a live document. They can make changes as they need to. So as they are going through, if they look at their data and determine, hey, we're doing really great with here, we need to keep moving in this direction, or maybe we need to hit the gas a little bit more, or maybe they see, this is not working in the way that we want it to, so we need to make some tweaks, make some changes here, so that we can get the results that we need. They communicate the school improvement expectations to the rest of the staff, and then they are constantly reviewing. It's that Plan Do Study Act process, where they're constantly looking at the data and making changes and improving and acting on what the data is saying.
Could I interrupt you for just a second? When they do need to make a change to the plan that we've approved, when, if ever, would it be appropriate for the board to be informed? Where would there be, I mean, little tweaks, but if there's something significant taking place, would that ever come to the board for approval or discussion?
I believe that the way it's discussed in the law, if it's a substantive change, if it changes the entire plan, so to speak, most of what we're referring to as being a living document is that you're gonna be tweaking action steps, you're gonna be, you know, et cetera. So if it was a very, very significant change.
Significant, then it would come to us.
Come back for review and approval.
Thank you.
Great question. Stealing my thunder just a tad. So let's revisit and look at a comparison between the general statute and Moore County Schools processes and procedures, and kind of bring it back together. So the school improvement team, by law, it should have all grades, content area, all groups represented. So how that looks in the schools is every two years, which is best practice, although there's nothing in the law that says they can't serve longer, about every two years, they vote on the members who will be part of the school improvement team. They try to make sure that they represent all grade levels, all content areas, encore, specialists, teacher assistants, you know, classified staff as well, and then have parent representatives on the team, although anyone is welcome anytime to a school improvement team meeting. And so that's what that looks like. So the second thing there is the open meeting law. Meeting dates and locations are posted on the school calendar, as well as NC Star. That is the best way to go and look, when you look on the Moore County School website, which I'll show you shortly, where you see all of the dates for the school improvement team meetings, and where and when they'll be located. And then, of course, they follow that 48-hour rule. Things happen, sometimes you have to cancel, like weather, and so they try to post as soon as possible any changes. Public records, by law, the meeting minutes are open for viewing. They are linked to the dates in NC Star for their school improvement team meetings, and so the minutes are readily available after every school improvement team meeting. The school improvement plans are viewable in NC Star. As we've said multiple times, they are living documents. We're working the plan. What doesn't change, a significant change would be the goals and performance measures. What doesn't change are the goals and performance measures. The action steps will be marked complete as completed, and then new will be added, and that is working the plan. The school votes on the plan. As mentioned, it is usually an anonymous vote. A lot of times, they try to do paper pencil, it's easier that way, although you can use some tech tools to do that. But that allows for everybody on the staff to have a vote, and to have a say, and to give feedback. Because when you say, I do not vote for this plan, typically, they give a reason why, what's missing, what needs to be added, in order to ensure that everybody is buying into this plan. Because we are articulating that this is the focus plan of the school, and we are all working toward this, so everyone is a part of that collaborative process. The considerations for school safety, of course, the school improvement team during the meeting can go into a closed session, when they're talking about individual student data, individual teacher data, or safety. The adoptions of the plans are every year, and every two years, we come, and half of the schools do present to the board on their plans. They're, I'm sorry, they are two-year plans. An effective period is two years. They update every year the goals and the performance measures, but they're usually a two-year plan to kind of work through how to get those gains aligned to the school improvement goal. What you'll see is that there is an elimination of other unnecessary plans, like PBIS, those positive behavior support teams, and MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, where we talk about individual student data and around interventions. Those are other committees, but they report and provide information for the school improvement team, so that collectively, they can review that data and monitor progress. So you'll notice that we're trying to be compliant with all requirements, making sure that there's open to feedback and address concerns. So the way that you can do that is, on the Moore County School website, you'll see that the school improvement process is defined there. The laws, the general statute is linked to the Moore County School website. From any school, and from the main website, you can get to the school improvement plans. The link to the Indistar platform, which is where the plan is housed, is there. The guest logins is also listed for the public. Anyone at any time can log into any plan in Moore County Schools and look at it. And then it gives you a little information about how you navigate through that, so what that looks like. When the public accesses Indistar, or NC Star, this is the guest view, this is just a screenshot of what that might look like. The landing page shows what the vision and values and mission of the school is. It also shows the indicators that you'll see in NC Star, where all the action steps are aligned. These are the indicators of success for school improvement. Things like having articulated teams, aligning efforts toward improving instruction, or improving professional learning teams, looking at individual student data. Those are those indicators of success. Those are listed on the landing page, and explained and defined, and there's some resources there. Then you can navigate, you'll see on the left side there, the navigation tool, you can navigate through the plan. This is basically a printable, viewable, but not modifiable, plan in time. So you can see the goals and performance measures, the summary report, which just talks about how many team meetings they've had, who were the members, what's been added, what forms have been submitted. Then the comprehensive plan report is there, that is the full version of the plan in that moment. And then the shared meeting agenda and minutes. When you click on that, it will take you to the list of school improvement team meetings, when they are and where they are. And then, when minutes are available, you can click on the minutes and see the collaborative conversation that they had during that time.
Thank you, Jamie and Heather. So just a quick timeline to kind of summarize everything up, where we're at. By October 4th, already passed that date, but that's when the parent notification letters went out for the two low-performing schools. Also, that's when the window up was made available for the two low-performance schools to get family or community feedback on their plans. They were all, the families and the community was notified on October 4th as well. We're doing our training today, and providing, you, in a few minutes after the board meeting, will provide you the books and all the school improvement plans that are up for review, for your review. We would ask that between tomorrow and the 18th, you send me an email with any of the feedback that you have, your initial feedback that you have as you review those plans. On October 15th, we will be providing you the school safety plans in closed session. Of course, those safety plans are not included in Indistar, those are separate, because of the confidentiality nature of those. Then we will have our schools that are up for review with us on the 22nd and the 23rd, will share their plans, what they're doing well, what they're focused on, how they're focusing on it. The school improvement, school safety plans are presented for the board of approval at the November 4th work session, and then approved on the 13th, and then after the 13th is when we would upload everything that has now been approved to NC Star. So, your assignment, you have two assignments. Assignment number one is to review the binder for schools that are up for approval, and in those binders, you're going to find the data sheets, the goals, the performance measures, and the school comprehensive plan as well. Copies of all of that, you won't need to go online to be able to see. These schools are up for reviews, all in the binder. And then assignment number two, first assignment to review it, and assignment number two is then just to email directly back to me, if you will. Before October 18th, that allows me to then share what your feedback is with any particular school, so they can make adjustments, or at least be able to respond to that, be able to meet your particular needs when they present to you, so it asks that you do that. So you have some homework. And I wanted to give you just a briefing on the school improvement process, and happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions by members of the board?
I have a few comments. First of all, reviewing, you know, there's really only a handful of things that this board, or any school board, does that's super impactful, and one of those is the school improvement plans. And I have to say, I gotta praise Dr. Locklear and his team for making this stuff meaningful, because I hearken back to the first year when I sat down on school. Many things, many teams just become dysfunctional. And an example is the, well, an example is the, well, they become dysfunctional and useless. And one was the Public Safety Committee that used to meet under Dr. Grimacy and Chief Frye. That committee met four times a year for six or seven, eight years. It was the chief of Moore County School Police, it was a rep from the Sheriff's Department, it was a rep from every police department, it was a rep from Moore County Emergency Services. They had quarterly meetings, they had donuts and coffee, as hell, it's probably right in here. But in those six, eight years, they met, not once did someone say, you know, have any of our SROs had active shooter training? The answer was no. Or have our SROs had any trauma medical training? The answer was no. I don't know what the Public Safety Committee did for six or eight years, meeting quarterly, but they certainly didn't discuss the safety of our faculty, staff, and student to the degree that they should have. It was the same thing with the school improvement programs. When I first sat down, and Mr. Holmes and Mr. Levy was there, the school improvement programs, Moore County Schools under Dr. Grimacy wasn't even following the law on school improvement plans. And I pointed out the law, and the board attorney at the time insisted we were following the law, and everybody voted on it anyway. And then three months later, we had to revote on them again, because it turns out, we weren't following the law, and the law was very clear. The General Assembly puts a lot of importance on school improvement plans, so it's very detailed. And, you know, the first year I sat here, we weren't following the law. The second year took a really long, hard content, and then I found out, looking at the content, that some principals, noteworthy, I mean, one principal didn't even bother to show up, and other principals weren't taking it seriously, because if you looked at the school improvement plan that they were presenting in front of the board, and then you went back and looked at the school improvement plan that they presented two years ago, they were essentially the same, they just like dusted it off and changed the date. Under Dr. Locklear and this team, that's different. You see what they're gonna do, and they're gonna hold their feet to the fire. And that's excellent, because, you know, it never should've got to the point where they just dust off the old one, pencil whip it, change the dates, and act like something's changed, when really, nothing's changed. I do want to say, I do have two very specific things about the upcoming ones, though, is in the security part that we're gonna cover in closed session, I would like to see copies of the actual memorandums of understanding, or LOIs, whatever they're called, between Moore County School Police and the surrounding departments and agencies. I don't know that those have been provided in the past. I think it's been acknowledged of their existence, but I would like to see the actual MOUs in detail. And then finally, you know, I want to see vision, innovation, and ambitious. I want to see innovative, I want to see vision, I want to see very, very ambitious, yet achievable plans. You know, I remember the principal of Pine Crest, Ms. Phillips, you know, she was sitting here, and by God, we're gonna be an A school. She didn't quite get it, but you could see the determination and vicious in her. So, look, there's nothing wrong with swinging for the bleachers and getting a strike. The important thing is that you swung for the bleachers. So let's see vision, let's see innovation, let's see a willingness to take risk and innovation, and let's see ambition. And pretty sure we're gonna see that this go around. Thank you.
Further? Yes, ma'am.
Just a comment, I do want to say thank you for letting us view those, because you are correct, there's many boards across the state that do not do this with their teams. So it's a privilege to do that and to look at, and I think it's important as well for board members to be involved in that. So thank you for letting us share that.
Further, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I totally agree. I really want to thank you for that. I thought it was absolutely exceptional, and we learned a lot from it, seeing where it comes from. You guys did a great job, really did.
Further? Okay, thank you very much. All right, at this point in time, it's 12:10. And so the question that I have for the board is, we have, okay, we have the police officer thing, and we have this additional thing, do you want to keep going? Okay, seems like a consensus?
I would say it's up to Dr. Locklear, if you had your team having a lunch, I don't want to.
I think we could at least move forward with this next item, and then if it'd be okay with the chair, we can measure where we are at that point, if we feel like we can move forward.
Okay.
I feel we could move forward with this item. Ms. Edmonds is back, and I believe the plan was to circle back to the police discussion.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, Ms. I will.
Just, so long as that's where the board wants to be, that's fine. So, let's go ahead with the, with the reviewing this police officer cost analysis and the like.
Okay, Ms. Chairman, thank you. I believe where we left off, Dr. Metcalf was about to dive into the presentation that was requested at the Board Budget, Finance, and Audit Committee, which was a comparison of our police salaries to the sheriff's department's scale. The information that's included in this presentation also includes the stipend that the board approved of the budget last year for advanced law enforcement training, which can be up to $350 a month for our school police. You know, and as I stated earlier, I do not recommend any action on any additional raises for our school police at this time, due to, you know, my perspective and feeling that that would need to be done across all roles and responsibility of our employee team, not just this. Certainly, they serve an incredibly critical and important role, but I still believe with the work the board did last year, with additional salary raises for our police, and additional stipend for training, that I would not recommend any additional action at this time. But I'll turn it over to Dr. Metcalf and Mrs. Edmonds to review the information reviewed with the committee. Mike?
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. We were asked by the Budget Committee to do a comparison of our school resource officers, our police, Moore County Schools Police, to the sheriff officers' police. So I'm gonna try to talk you through this particular diagram, and thank Ms. Edmonds for her work with this as well. As you can see, and I want your eye to go toward that top four boxes on the very top, if you can, that is our current minimum-maximum salary range. On the left in the blue is the Moore County Schools Police, and I would direct you to that very top line, the officer, the deputy, and I'll focus there. Those are on our early entry officers, our deputies are officers. And you can see that our minimum salary, and this is by month, our minimum salary for Moore County Schools Police is $3,617.72. It is a range, and for us, that is based on years of employment. The maximum monthly The maximum monthly salary would be four thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. And next is the kind of lime green box is the sheriff's range. And their range is somewhat different. It's not always based off of years in employment. It may be some, there's some flexibility in there that we don't necessarily have in our range. But their minimum salary for starting officer is three thousand, nine hundred dollars. Their maximum is six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. So then over in the peach, on the far right, just gives you the percentage difference. So you can see as a minimum, a sheriff's officer is making eight percent more currently than the minimum of a Moore County Schools Police Officer. And at the maximum end of the scale, they would be making twenty-four percent more than one of our officers, Moore County Schools Police Officers, at the maximum end of the scale. That is on that top line. Now, in the second group, the group of four boxes in the middle, what Ms. Edmonds prepared for us is if we were to give our officers an eight percent raise, how does that then compare to their particular salary? So you can see at an eight percent increase, at the minimum, in the far right, the differential, the minimum starting officer would be making the same that a sheriff's deputy would make, beginning sheriff's deputy. But at the maximum of the scale...
Just, just one second here. But our beginning officer has at least a year's worth of experience. The sheriff's beginning officer could have zero years worth of experience, am I correct?
Yeah, so we're just looking at the minimum, the minimum, the minimum, and comparing it to their minimum. That's correct. At the maximum, the sheriff's officer would be making fifteen percent more than our officer at their maximum with an eight percent increase. If we were to increase their salary by ten percent, the minimum would be two percent more than the minimum starting salary for sheriff's office. Two percent more, and at the maximum, thirteen percent less. I'm hoping that makes sense to everybody. Now, I wanted, I want to put some more context into it of what that would cost to the district if we were to provide these raises. So a, we, we have twelve officers. And then Ms. Edmonds prepared this, if we were able to increase by eight officers, which is what we currently have in the budget. So those officers, a three percent increase would cost the district forty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars and seventy-seven cents a year, reoccurring costs. At a six percent increase, that would be eighty-five thousand dollars, eighty-five, six oh one fifty-three as a reoccurring cost. If we went eight percent increase, it's a hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents reoccurring. And a full ten percent would be a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents reoccurring every year. Now, I want to add a little bit more context to it because I do, at the board, and greatly appreciate the board doing this. I think it was effective January first, twenty twenty-four. They provided additional supplement for training that our officers got, advanced training. So if an officer has the advanced SRO Survival Course, it's about a twenty-four hour course, they get additional a hundred dollars a month. So for a ten-month employee, that'd be an additional thousand, eleven-month, eleven-hundred, twelve-month employee, twelve-hundred. If they had the advanced law enforcement certification, that's an additional two hundred and fifty. The maximum they could get is an additional three hundred and fifty per month. So you can see for a ten-month employee, that's an additional thirty-five hundred dollars per month. The school resource certificate is four hundred hours. That also includes the advanced SRO, so that's three hundred and fifty-two. So an officer could get the advanced SRO and then the advanced law enforcement certification, get the maximum of three hundred and fifty a month. Or they could get the school resource officer certificate, the four hundred hours, which already includes the survival course and also receive the maximum three hundred and fifty. So...
I'm sorry, Dr. Metcalf, I'm sorry, I was traveling for business when this was before the board a year or so ago. But our school resource officers don't have to have school resource officer certificates to be, say, a school resource officer?
It's a basic training that they do for school resource officers. This is up and above that training.
Okay, I just want to be clear. So there's basic law enforcement training that they have to have, which every sworn officer has to have. Then they have to have a year, at least a year's worth of experience.
They have to have the year's worth of experience.
Right, then on top of that, they have to have, what? I'm talking mandatory requirements.
School SRO training, and I'm not sure how much time that is involved.
But that's different from the school resource officers.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. All right, so what we've prepared for here in this next slide, this final slide, is when we include the supplement of three hundred and fifty dollars a month into their salary where they're at. So the, the full amount that they could actually receive. So currently, if you add the additional three hundred and fifty dollars a month, again, this is their monthly salary. The, they would, they're, currently, our minimum officer, if they had the three hundred and fifty, the, the full training, they, at the minimum range of the salary scale, they make two percent more than a deputy with the sheriff's office makes. They would make sixteen percent less at the maximum. If you added an eight percent, eight percent increase to their salary, at the minimum end of the salary scale, they would make eight percent, eight percent more than the minimum salary for a deputy. And the ma, at the maximum side of that, they'd make eight percent less than a deputy with the sheriff's department would make. And if you were to provide a ten percent increase to their salary, if they also had the three hundred and fifty dollars a month because they had gone to the training, they, a officer on the minimum beginning end of our salary scale would make ten percent more than a deputy with the sheriff's department at that same stage would make. The maximum, that would be six percent less than the sheriff's department. I hope that that makes sense.
But, but to also put that into context, I believe you said that our sheriff's officers, excuse me, our, our police officers are ten-month employees.
We have a mixed group. We have some, most of our officers are ten-month. We have some that are eleven-month and twelve-month as well.
Okay, so that, so that also is a variable. That is, is kind of tough to measure.
Yeah, that's, that's why we chose to do this analysis.
Right, right.
On a monthly basis, so that you could see what their monthly salary is. Certainly, somebody that works ten months isn't paid for the eleven or twelve months that they have the summer off.
Right. Which you said might be a disadvantage, but also might be an advantage, depending on the person, right?
Well, they have the opportunity to do, do other kinds of work and make up that salary if they show you to do that.
Right, okay. So we're a little different.
Mr. Levy, did the Budget Committee want, did they give a percentage of what raise they wanted?
Yes, it was ten percent, it was ten percent. And that was at a cost of a hundred and forty-two, I believe it's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Am I correct?
Ten percent would be a hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Right, a hundred, roughly a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, which I thought, and this wasn't the opinion of the Budget Committee, I thought that would come from fund eight at a very minimum, which we just heard earlier is three million dollars in recurring revenue. So that's where that money would, would, would come from. And once again, my, my feeling is that we're eleven, by the way, this hundred and forty-two thousand, is that for how many additional officers?
That would add an additional, the twelve that we have, including the chief, and it would be eight additional officers that are on budget.
Okay, and we're actually eleven short, am I correct, Dr. Locklear, total?
I believe we wanted to get to twenty-three officers, is that correct? So yes, we'd be eleven short.
Right, so this is, this would only bring us up to eight. And once again, if this isn't a panacea, I don't think this, and one of the things that the committee was talking about, which was, which was correct, this doesn't guarantee that we'll get more officers. But the only way we can get more officers is to, is to get into the competition for officers because there's a limited number. And if anybody could point out a way for us to get officers other than raising salaries, I'd like to know about it because I'd like to advocate for that, maybe differently, I've no idea. But I can't sit back and say, okay, well, we're just short officers, everybody's short officers, there's nothing we can do about it. I can't, when we've got money which is available, and I feel very, very bad that we can't give the teachers raises, that, 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 that money in fund eight won't fund raises for all the teachers or all the cafeteria workers or all the bus drivers. And, and, and we should, we, we should raise their salaries, okay? But I know that with all of the things that are going on right now with the, with school safety, that this at a minimum is what we can do because we're just playing Russian roulette. And hopefully, it never happens. But if something like that does happen in Moore County Schools, we'll at least be able to say that we tried our damnedest. And I do also put some blame on the North Carolina State Sheriff's Association. Because the North Carolina State Sheriff's Association blocks us from hiring rookie police officers. They're blocking us from hiring MPs. They're blocking us from hiring out-of-state police officers, some police officers who are already down here halfway retired, maybe even playing golf, who would like to have a job here, being one of our, some of our school resource officers. We can't hire them because we have to have a, 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 a one-year experience North Carolina police officer. If that's the case, we've got to pay for it. I, I've no idea how else to do it. I wish, I, I hope other members of the board or, or other people can, can give other ideas. Because I'm fresh out of ideas, except for this one.
I have a question.
Yes.
If we were to, I'm trying to see how it, if, if we were to give our police force to the county, what, would the rules still apply as far as the one year? They wouldn't apply.
Yeah.
I don't know that. I, I believe they apply.
They would apply, okay.
But here's a...
I'm, I'm not saying we are, I just, that was just a question.
No, 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 I, I'm sure they do. I mean, the council can answer that definitively, but I'm sure they do. Here's a big misconception, right? Let me, let me, let me discuss this. We are one of two school districts, there's two, a hundred and seventeen school districts in North Carolina. We are one of two, us and Charlotte Mecklenburg, who have our own private police force. The, a lot of people, and, and for some reason, look, when it's two o'clock in the morning and someone breaks into our house, I don't roll over and call the superintendent, right? I call the sheriff, right? And it's the same thing with the safety of our schools. We are education professionals. Our superintendent and his staff should be one hundred percent focused on education, not on running a police department. Running a police department is a one hundred percent distraction from our primary mission when we have professionals right up the road. Here's the misnomer, though. Everyone says, well, gosh, if we turn over the Sheriff's Department, we won't have SROs in our schools. That is, that is a one hundred percent factually incorrect, that's a lie. And I'll tell you why. Go up to Lee County, every single school in Lee County has an SRO provided by the police, provided by the Sheriff's Department. It has been for years. When we've been at what, half, maybe half of our schools? The fact of the matter is, the Sheriff's Department, that's where our professional law enforcement resides. They have investigators, they have critical mass, they have trainers, they have standards people, they have internal reviews, they have CID. They have everything you really need to run a department. And here's the misnomer. People say, well, gosh, you'll just get a random officer. No, the way to organize an SRO department is the sheriff, they get all the funding we have, plus more from the county commissioners, and they stand up an SRO division. They don't just take random officers off of the street and assign them to, to schools. What they do is they stand up a special division, the School Resource Officer Division. They have a person, a captain or a lieutenant in charge of that who has experience with it. And then they have school resource officers. And then they assign them to schools, right? And, and we have an MOU, Moore County Schools has an MOU with the Memorandum of Understanding saying the number of officers, how many they're going to work, and this and that. And it solves the summer problem because when do you need, when do most department need officers? They need them in the summer when all the tourists are here and everybody's out recreating and stuff. So instead of having SROs guarding empty schools, right? Then those SROs are redeployed elsewhere within the Sheriff's Department. It is absolute, we as a board, we shouldn't be talking about how we're going to fund our SROs. I mean, that's important, and I got a lot to say on this Monday after I hear everyone else's import, input. But we should be talking about how we turn it back over to the Sheriff's Department. And here's a dirty little secret. The Sheriff's Department doesn't want it because the way it's set up now, and I don't know the intricacies of this, I would like this to be part of next week's brief, Dr. Locklear, is if somebody retires from the Sheriff's Department, they can come work here. And, but they can't necessarily work at other departments, right? So there's some little cozy law enforcement deal that allows retired police officers from other departments to come work for Moore County School Police, where they can't go and work for, say, someone retires from the Sheriff's Department, they can't go work for Aberdeen. I, I don't know a hundred percent, so I'm talking a bit out of turn. But there's a cozy little deal that the leadership of the Sheriff's Department likes as far as retiring officers, being able to work for Moore County Schools. But the true solution is, is to turn our SROs, get in line with a hundred and fifteen other school districts, turn it over to the law enforcement professionals, who again, they have the critical mass, they have the, the CID, they have the investigators, they have the training, they have everything. And instead, we just replicated here. Quite frankly, they should take over the school, the school, the campus police at Sand Hills Community College as well. Sand Hills Community College has their own internal shoot house for active shooter response training that for some reason our people can't use and the Sheriff's Department can't use. So they got this nice, beautiful facility over there, but we built these little snow pipes. We need to let the professional law enforcement people in Carthage handle the professional law enforcement of our schools. That was not, we, 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 we talk as a board and we actually have, you know, we're supposed to be a deliberative board and we ought to put this on the agenda because there are far, far more, there are far more reasons to turn the SROs back over to the sheriff's office than there are for keeping them. And the, the biggest thing, it's a giant, it's a giant distraction for the superintendent and his staff to run a police department. And by the way, I can show you instances where there have been valid sworn allegations that the SROs were used to cover up things such as rape of students. I mean, that, that was a sworn allegation. And, you know, you want to talk about a double standard, you know? Why, why do we have, and I'm not, this is nothing against Dr. Locklear, but why do we have the superintendent who wants to minimize, you know, acts of violence and this and that? And Dr. Locklear, this has nothing to do, a hypothetical superintendent. Why do we have him in charge of the police force who produces those statistics and could potentially manipulate those statistics? Guarantee you, I mean, it's not happening now, but I guarantee you that happened in the past. There, so we as a body ought to have a discussion on that.
Other, other comments?
But yes, that, that was not my planned comment. That was just, Stacy, you hit on something I was not even going to bring up.
Well, I was just thinking, I'm trying to think outside the box of how you can get that. that. Um, because, as you know, I wasn't in, in agreements with, with, with this. And, um, I just, I believe it's a great thing to do, and, um, you know, but I don't believe it's a fair thing to do for our teachers. I think we are still trying to, um, retain teachers and keep them, and bring them to Moore County Schools, and to not give them a raise as well would, would be a dis- disservice, I think. So I think if you're going to do a, a raise, it has to be across the board, um, because we're trying to, you know, it's almost like you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't, right? People are going to get you and say, oh, you don't support the police officers. No, I, I do support our police officers, but I, I don't think a raise is going to bring in our police officers. So, that's all.
Yes, so I, I have some stuff, like I said, I-
Keep going.
I got, I got a rule based upon this Caldwell's comment. Okay, so first of all, I'm going to respond to what Mr. Levy says. So first of all, uh, Mr. Levy said, the only way to hire more officers is more dollars. That is, that is not true. And I'll give you an example. We have a teacher shortage, right? But guess who doesn't have a teacher shortage? Go to Sand Hills Community Co-, or Sand Hills Classical Christian, who pays less. They don't have a teacher shortage. They have a teacher access, and they pay less. Go to Star's Charter School, right? So, um, I guess they do charter schools out, are they on the same pay for teachers? Or do they pay less or more? Do they have flexibility?
I believe they, they operate on the same pay scales than, that we do, yes. They have, they have flexibility in who they can hire.
Yeah. So, um, so, well, go to Star's Charter School. They don't have a, they don't have a teacher shortage, right? So, many, many times, many, many times, who you work for and leadership is much more important than how much you get paid. So, um-
If I can just interject real quick, just because I think for charter schools and private schools, they can, they can hire non-teachers as well. So we have to hire-
Sure. I mean, there, there may be other factors, but I, I just, I did a little survey, because I was curious about the teacher shortage, so I called around, and, you know, it, it appears to be a Moore County, in Moore County, it appears to be a Moore County Schools issue, not a systemic, you know? So anyway, my point of saying that is, one is, we're, we're obviously working to turn around the work environment, you know, student discipline, student respect, all that stuff, to get those teachers to come back. But employees vote with their feet, and it's not always about money, about leadership, work environment, and other things. And there's all kinds of things that we could do to include the, to improve the leadership and morale of the, uh, SROs. But, um, Mr. Levy, I have a question for you. You talk about this money that's sitting in fund eight. Where did, where did that money come from, that's sitting there this year?
Well, that, um-
Well, no, I, I, I mean, you're in charge of the budget committee. I thought I'd ask the committee chair.
Well, first of all, as Ms., as she was explaining, um, that comes from, uh, at least, it, it comes from, uh, special funds, uh, which are, which are given to us, which are, um, some of which are recurring. And, uh, as you said, it's about, uh, $3 million. Uh, in, I believe you said, $3 million of recurring revenue? Am I, am I incorrect?
It, it was $3,263,000 in available unrestricted.
$3 million in, 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 in available unrestricted. Uh, and, uh, some of that is, is recurring revenue. Am I correct?
So the total unrestricted is $6,935,000, and the recurring-
Yes, that's what I thought.
Expenses are $3,672,000, leaving the available unrestricted at $3,263,000.
Which is recurring revenue. Am I correct?
Um, it isn't, so it's not always recurring at the same amounts. A lot of the, the items are coming in. They are, um, grants, they are, just like the Medicaid reimbursement is, they, it changes, and we never know when it's coming. It comes in at different times.
Okay.
So, so, so of that $6 million, so there's $6 billion, so let me see if I got this straight. So there's six, we have $6 million extra.
There is $6 million in unrestricted revenue.
Yeah, and $3 million of that is-
Recurring expenses.
Recurring expenses that we're not spending.
That we are spending.
Wait, so that's, wait-
3.2, that's, that's not, um, that's still unrestricted, that's, um, not in reoccurring expenses.
No, no, right, no, uh, actually, Mr. Schwartz interjecting can, uh, cause confusion. So what I, that's not what I was trying to understand. I was trying to understand something else. Um, so there's six, we have $6 million extra. That's unspoken for.
It depends on what PRC it's in, but, but technically, yes. Um, there was a chart I presented, um, back in August or June, I can't remember which, that showed, um, which PRCs. But that is unrestricted, so technically, yes, the district could spend it, yes.
So we have $6 million unspent. And how much of that is obligated or earmarked, whatever term you want to use right now? None of it?
3.2.
3.2? And what's that, what's that earmarked for?
Recurring expenses. It could be anything from, typically, it's payroll-related items.
So, so that's not available money. So do we have people in those seats, or is that extra, is that unspent? Is that, is that payroll money? I, I'm trying to figure out the status of the money, right? So you say we have $6 million available, but then $3 million of it we plan on spending through the end of the year, right? I mean, it's already obligate, what, in the, in the federal government, they could say it's obligated or planned, right?
Correct, yes.
So we have $3 million. Okay, so where did this $3 million come from? Is it unspent salaries? Anticipated unspent salaries? Or where did it come from?
It would be from any of the grants, or, um, what, the Medicaid, the, uh, um, Impact Aid, any of the different, uh, pro-, grants or programs that we have, um, that was not spent for the current year that it was, that we received the money.
Okay, so, um, so, um, where is the forecasted money for the, um, for the unfilled positions? Where does it factor in this?
So the vacancies?
Yes.
Okay, so vacancies, we have-
Is that included in the $6 million? That's my question.
No, the vacancies are in Fund, we have, I've got, there's 35.2 vacancies in Fund 2, which is the general fund. And then in Fund 8, um, there, I don't have the number of positions, but it's a total of $820,285 in vacancies there.
Okay. And, and correct my mind, what's Fund 8 for?
That is what we were talking about, the, um, it's the, um, restricted revenue for, um, grants and-
That's, that's the $11 million we're, we're talking about, which, uh, and, and that's what you're saying about the, the $6 million and the $3 million. That's all Fund 8.
Yeah, so, so here's my question. Uh, and again, I'm just trying to figure out how we're running the railroad, right? Because I predicted this. I predicted this at the last two meetings. All of a sudden, we have money. Gosh, look, we have money. Nick Poserno talks about this. You guys have more money, you know what to do with. So here it is. So here's my question for, why do we not have budgets? So if we had budgeted income or expected income, why do we not have budgeted expenditures for it? What, what, what are we crossing off? Here's my question for the superintendent. What are we crossing off the line? What, what line are we crossing out in our budget forecast to spend this money? Or do we just not have anything planned to spend this money on?
This money's been accrued over a number of years, and so it's, it's allowed, it's called restricted revenue, because we reimburse based on services we provide, and, um, we reimburse based on the, the impact of federal buildings and, and military, federal Impact Aid funding. Uh, so we've gotten this money over a period of years and years, and it has accrued, uh, and it's been saved, quite honestly. And tried to strategically not spend it on reoccurring costs, although we see we have-
Such as salary increases. Right. We tried really hard not to do that.
Correct. And so this restricted revenue source is for that purpose. Uh, and where, I might bring it forward to you later this year on a safety, maybe there's a safety issue I want to bring forward to spend some of this money.
Yeah, one-time expenditure.
Yeah, one-time expenditure, or something that would take us for, you know, uh, for a long period of time. So that's how the, I view this, this, these funds, and I've talked to the board about these funds, is that they very much are better used for one-time expenditures as best possible. Uh, and if you are going to use them for recurring costs, it needs to be done very strategically.
Yeah, and that's what I, that, that was my whole line of questioning, is I was trying to figure out, is this un, un, is this spending salaries from vacant positions? Or is this spending an unexpected windfall? Or it turns out this is the case, we're spending money accrued that's not reoccurring, or not necessarily recurring?
We, it's unpredictable how it will reoccur. Uh, we can look at, and we have shared before, where we've looked at five-year averages, and how much have we gotten over the last five years, and that sort of thing. But it is not predictable. We don't know for sure exactly how much we'll get reimbursed in year to year.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question. Look, school funding is very complicated. I was just trying to make sure that I and everyone else understood. Uh, I guess I'm kind of slow on that. Um, so just one clarification. We had a, oddly enough, a school board candidate running around saying that, uh, you know, our Hensley talks so much, and the SROs, they're salaried, and they're sitting there. Let me make, so SROs are hourly, correct?
I'm going to have Ms. Adams answer that question.
They're not salaried, they're, they may, they're not exempt, they're not salary exempt, are they?
No, they're not.
Right, so they're hourly?
Um, they are hourly with the exception of-
The chief, maybe?
Yes, any director. They are hourly, and they are, um, non-exempt employees.
Correct, right, so they get overtime. So they're sal-, they may be, they may or may not be salaried, but they're not exempt, so they get overtime.
They, it is overtime, but it's in the form of comp time, compensatory time, so they get that time. They can, if it's over and above their 40 hours, um, it gets banked, and then they can, um, they can use it later.
Okay, okay, so, so, um, so we don't ever pay overtime, or so it's always banked?
We do over, I think the hours are 240 or 280, but there's a, there's a max that we can, we let them bank them, and anything after that, they do get paid out.
Right, okay, so, um, um, okay, look, my request goes back to what I asked before we took a break, is, um, there are 10 sworn departments in, not including private forces such as O'Neil and, uh, Medical, or, uh, whatever, the First Health. Uh, so I'd like to see not just Moore County sheriffs, but I'd like to see from the town of Robbins up to Pinehurst, because, you know, we're not just competing against the sheriff's department, we're, we're competing against 10 agencies. Um, and, um, the, uh, the duty summary, I mean, you know, you got to compare apples to, apples to apples, and, you know, uh, if an SRO is a Monday through Friday, uh, sedentary, staying on the campus, that's, that's a different job than shift work, nights, weekends, you know? 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM, working Saturdays and Sundays. So I'd like to see a matrix showing a duty summary before we decide. And then I'd also like to see, uh, of course, we don't need names attached to this, but total yearly pay with overtime. Uh, and then, um, some sort of explanation on how the retirement works between departments, because I, I've been told, I'm not personally verified, but I've been told that, uh, that there are retirement, that Moore County Schools Police creates retirement opportunities for law enforcement that wouldn't be available, uh, if Moore County Schools Police did not exist, has something to do with the way it's funded. But I don't, I cannot say that for sure.
I probably can answer that question right now. Uh, the sheriff's department is going to be local, it's going to be a, a, a local government retirement system versus the state retirement system. And so, for example, if a state employee retired today, they could go work for local government tomorrow. So I believe that's, and Rich is looking at me like I'm crazy, but I'm almost 100% positive. Uh, that it, that it works that way. But, uh, and I could be corrected, but I'll make sure I'm correct on that. But, uh, it's based on the retirement system you've been paying into. So I could, you know, a state employee could retire and then go work for, you know, for local or county government, uh, because it's a different retirement system. I believe that's how that works.
Yeah, I just know, I just know that Sheriff Fields is against taking over the SROs, and I've looked for reasons why. And, you know, it comes down to, uh, well, you have to explore the reasons why. I mean, obviously, it's additional work. Well, okay, you're a, you know, 99 other sheriffs do it. You know, you're a professional law, law enforcement have at it, right? Uh, well, actually, at least 115 other departments and sheriffs do it, at least. Um, and, or, so, yeah, there's more workload, but that's not a good enough excuse. We need to do what's best for the safety of our faculty, staff, and students, not what is convenient for the sheriff. And then secondly, there's this, oh, well, there's this cozy little retirement. That's a horrible reason. You know, I don't want to jeopardize the safety of our faculty, staff, and students, just so that someone who has a county-funded job can slide, or a local-funded job can slide into a state-funded job or vice versa. Those are horrible reasons for not having our, our SROs with the professional law enforcement. But we'll save that for another day. That should be on next week's agenda, though, a conversation about that. Anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Other, uh, members of the board?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Or a request for Dr. Locklear. If, could we find out what the numbers are for, um, employed SROs with Charlotte Mecklenburg? If their percentages are anywhere close to ours comparatively? And also, and this is a big ask, but, uh, even with our local agencies here, what, what their comparison, what their hires are compared to where we stand, and just how significant of a difference there is? Um, I see your face, Dr. Metcalf. Um, Sheriff's Department, Aberdeen, Southern Pines, Pine Bluff, Robbins, all of, like, how, how well-staffed are they in compare? Yes, sir, in comparison to Moore County Schools? And I, I appreciate the time that, that will take, sir.
Uh, I would just caution, uh, just say that, um, we've gotten a lot of requests for information. I'm not so sure we'll have that available by next Monday.
No, that's, no, no.
Let me, let me ask, let me ask a question.
If I could, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. At, at least, at least, the Charlotte Mecklenburg numbers. Maybe not, maybe the, the county numbers are too much to ask, but I would like to know Charlotte Mecklenburg compared to ours, please, sir.
Let me, let me also, uh, ask this question, because it is a question, it's not, not necessarily an answer. There's a lot of questions which the board, righteously, uh, is, is asking here. Would it be helpful if we continued this conversation to the November, um, board meeting, where you might have, where your staff might have more time, uh, to consider this, uh, so that you're not rushed, uh, into, uh, next week on it? I'm anxious to get this done, but I also actually want to get it done. And I think one way to do that is to satisfy the board that there's a solution here. May not be my solution. It may be partially my solution and other people's solution. But I'm more interested in, in, in a solution than actually, um, uh, getting necessarily my, uh, my solution. So, uh, how's, how's that be with the board? Does that work with consensus of the board? That this go into, over into November? Dr. Locklear, is that possible? Or is that?
Well, certainly, uh, the board, you know, has consensus of doing that, certainly. That, that could be helpful for us to have more information, time to get more information as best possible. Some of this we may not be able to get exactly.
Right.
But we'll do our very best to get as much information for the board as possible.
Okay, so if that's okay, um, will, instead of doing this on, uh, on, at the works, we'll postpone this to the, uh, work session, uh, for November? Is that acceptable to the board? If it is, then that is what we'll do, Dr. Locklear. And I'll give you a little bit of breathing room, because I think, uh, a lot of these questions are, they're righteous, you know? They're, uh, they're, they're exactly what we should be doing. Uh, and we need to get the, uh, the, the proper information. Okay, so, uh, let's go forward to, um- Okay, so you, you-
Do the action and, uh, consent for next week.
We did.
Yeah, but I'd like some input to it.
Um, so I will just, just to quickly tell you that they said, and if you want to change anything, just shout out, but, so our actions were only A and F, and then the rest was consent, and then obviously B, we're tabling till next, till November, if that helps. If you want any other actions.
Okay, so, so I have two questions, and then I have something I'd like added to the agenda. So my, so my first question is, as long as I was not nominated as a voting delegate-
You were.
Then I'm good, okay? Then I'm good with that.
Yeah, well, no, wait a second, you were.
I am.
You were.
It was all of us, though, all of us were, because-
Oh, okay.
Because of the switch of people coming- It was all of us, though, all of us were, because, because of the switch of people coming on to the board.
When is it, just out of curiosity?
But not necessarily, if you're not going, you don't have to be one, but they had to put at least all four of them on, everyone on there.
Okay, then, I, I have, I have another I'd, I'd like to add to the agenda. Uh, I would like to add a, uh, discussion for possible receipt of improper and/or illegal gratuities, uh, received by certain school board members in conjunction with a contract added to next week's agenda. I'll say that again, discussion of possible receipt of improper and/or illegal gratuities received by certain school board members in conjunction with issuing a contract. So I would like that added to next week's agenda. Okay, is, I've no idea, is it six days?
Not till next Tuesday. It's timely.
It's timely, that's what you, that's what you, uh, want? Um, so that's, um, so that, that would be, uh, ill, you said illegal contracts? Illegal gratuities? Um, what I said was a discussion, possible receipt of improper or illegal gratuities received by certain school board members in conjunction with an issued contract, or with a contract. Okay. Uh, do you want to elucidate as, as to what that is? Is that the U.S. Open? I mean, if you want to discuss it now, it wasn't my intention. Okay, well, um, I've no idea, I've just no idea what it is, so. Uh, but if you want to bring that up, uh, next time, I suppose you can. Okay, do what you want. Okay, um, so that'll be added to the, uh, to, uh, next, uh, to the next agenda. All right, what else? All right, um, so, are we, uh?
You still have board committee reports and updates.
Okay, so, it's, do, do you want to keep going forward with this? Pointing to Dr. Locklear. This'll take about thirty seconds. Okay, all right. Um, all right, uh.
You're up to three D, committee reports.
Okay, all right, committee reports, yeah, all right. Um, okay, the, um, uh, clearly, the, uh, the budget committee met. And, uh, but we've discussed that ad nauseam here, uh, as to what happened to the budget committee. So I don't think anything further needs to be discussed with regard to the budget committee. Now, we've got the, um, the Committee on Policies, uh, the Committee on Policies, uh, we already did the first reading of the policies. The, um, uh, there, there was one policy which was discussed, uh, which dealt with Title IX, and, but that was late on the table. Did, did you have anything to add to that? Okay. Were there any, are there any other committee reports?
Yeah, we had the, um, curriculum and media committee, and Ms. Bruno brought in a couple, uh, topics. One was related to, uh, Scholastic and the book fair. Do you want to talk, touch on that, any? No? Okay. And, um, so that was the discretion, um, it was in regards to, uh, appropriate books. And so I think it was a consensus of the committee to, um, send it to the, what committee was it?
Policy, Policy Committee.
Yep, uh, for review. Um, and then Ms. Bruno brought in another, um, proposed language program for fourth grade.
Wait, wait, I, I'm sorry.
It's included in your, in your minutes.
Um, rather, well, no, I don't have them.
You don't have any?
No, but I could pull them up, but just real quick, um, it's just a procedural thing. Um, rather than refer stuff from committee to committee without getting input from the rest of the board, uh, which it appears we're trying to do, why don't we, if this came out of committee, why don't we have an open and discussion, uh, and debate about it? I mean, we're supposed to be a deliberative body, let's deliberate. Because maybe the majority of the board doesn't feel the way the committee does, and maybe, uh, you should get comments from the rest of the board members so that even if the board as a whole decides to move forward and refer it to the policy committee,
Perhaps if you'll let me finish, you may find an answer that would be satisfactory to you. Okay, so as I was mentioning before, um, that there was another issue that was brought, and, um, I made a motion to, um, bring it out of committee and present it to the board. So, maybe that helped clear that up.
Well, I'm confused, so what are we bringing in front of the board?
It was the language pilot program, starting in fourth grade.
So what's the language pilot program?
You would have to talk to Ms. Bruno, she's sitting right next to you, she could help fill you in on that.
Um, I just suggested that we, we pilot a program, um, starting another language in fourth grade. Um, this was, this was not agreed to because of, um, well, because first of all, of our teacher shortage. Second of all, where do you go after fourth grade? Um, there, there were a lot of things, uh, against it which made perfect sense. I just brought it up because I think that that's when children really learn. They learn languages at a much younger age, so that's why, um, I brought that up.
And, yeah, and we, we were talking about the, how these, um, books get in, and
And I was, I was against Scholastic for the, um, uh, not against Scholastic as a whole, if teachers want to order it, but I'm against Scholastic, uh, for the book fairs, because that's how all these books have come into our libraries. And we're spending way too much time and money, uh, trying to get rid of, of some of these books that are not age-appropriate or educationally appropriate. So that's why I brought that up also.
What was decided on that?
Uh, to go to policy.
Okay, and I think that's why David wants.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Why was it going to policy?
No, 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 uh-uh, that one wasn't.
Scholastic was going to policy, is what my understanding was, but I'm unclear on why.
Schol, the Scholastic?
I could be wrong.
It was, yeah, it was brought completely.
It was completely tabled?
Hmm, that's not what the minutes say.
The world, the world language per, same.
I know about Scholastic.
I believe it's in my memories, it's in my memories.
Scholastic is a totally separate.
No, we're talking about Scholastic now.
They both, they both, right here, I'm looking at the minutes Mr. Holmes referred to. Uh, the first one said the motion to present it to the entire board on four November work session passed three to zero. So we look forward to the Scholastic, uh, a presentation being given to that on four November. And then the second one, which apparently are the ten books, uh, that's going to the policy committee. And my point is, the one that's going from committee to committee, why don't we discuss it and deliberate it as a body first? That way, the policy committee isn't planning in a vacuum, and they have the thoughts and ideas uh, of the rest of the board, assuming the board even wants to move forward with it. The board may not want to move forward with it, and the policy committee just wasted their time and effort of them and their staff.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Actually, actually, that's, that's actually backwards. What happens with committees is this. The, the committee deliberates and decides whether something is gonna go to the board. The board doesn't necessarily deliberate first and send it to the committee, although that can happen, okay? If a board member has an idea, they need to bring it up to the board. But let the committee make the sausage, so to speak, and then the committee can bring anything it has to the board. By the way, I believe the November thing, I, I haven't looked at the, at the minutes. I believe the November thing was the language thing. And you're, you're nodding your head, and I believe what the, what the committee, uh, passed three to zero was that the, um, staff, asked the staff to bring up an outline of, of what it would take to do a language program starting in the fourth grade, and to bring that to the board in November. Am I correct on that, Dr. Locklear?
Yes, sir, that's how I understood, uh, the outcome of the vote from the committee.
The first item, which is a language thing, is supposed to be briefed to us at the four November work session. It's right here in the minutes.
Yes, sir.
Right, that's, that's, that's correct. But now we're getting back to your planning process, Mr. Chair. And I would argue that, that, see, that's the problem that we have with the innovative high school, and that's the problem we have with our strategic plan, is rather than go out and, and engage the stakeholders in, in the case of the innovative high school and their ten-year construction, that's the county commissioners, uh, and the public, you want to do the planning internal and then just present one or two options. And in this case, the stakeholders are the board members. You should always get commanders in tent, you should always take the temperature of the people who are the stakeholders, but that's the flaw in your planning process, whether it's, whether it's this thing right here. Because you want, you, you've literally just stated that you want to go in your policy committee, you're not even interested in what any of us want to say while you make the sausage, then you're gonna come out and present the sausage. You should welcome everyone's inputs and everyone's thoughts and ideas. And you, hold on, and you may even find out that there's four people who say, we're not moving forward with that regardless of what the sausage looks like, I don't care if it's kielbasa or bratwurst, not happening. But that is exactly what committees do. Committees take a look at something, and they, uh, they, there might be committee members who would dig, uh, who, who would ask other people what their opinion is and the like, and then they make a proposal. Committees make proposals to the boards. That's the way committees work. You don't do it the opposite. Boards don't make proposals to committees. I would like to add an additional. Committees generally make proposals to boards, but to the extent that a member of a board has a proposal, they can bring it before the board without even going to the committee. I make a motion, uh, actually, I would like added to next week's agenda, uh, the directive to make certain books and publications, I would like that added to next week's agenda.
A discussion?
Yeah, it was a discussion, we'll just add it to next week's discussion. So we'll discuss the potential illegal and, and certainly inappropriate, uh, gratuities in conjunction with a contract. We'll discuss that, and then we'll discuss this directive to make certain books and publications available.
And, uh, since I'm the one who, who brought this up, um, I, I totally agree with that. I really think that we should discuss it, because if everybody thinks that it's wrong.
I'm not, and, and again, I, I don't know whether it's wrong or right, I just know what, what I read in the pilot and other. I mean, I, I, I don't know, I kind of have some thoughts and ideas, but I'd like to hear what it's all about. Instead of this planning in secrecy, I mean, my God, we're planning in secrecy so much, we won't even discuss it among board members in public. That is. No, 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 wait a sec, wait a sec, wait a sec, wait a sec. The, uh, excuse me, the, um, the committee meetings are public, okay? Not only are they public, they're reported by the pilot. What, th- there's no reason to have a committee if you're going to discuss everything with the entirety of the board. If, I mean, and, and if that's what you want to do, then that's fine. Mr. Levy, that's not, you mischaracterized what I said. What I said, no, Mr. Levy, let's, let's think back five minutes, it's sometimes it's difficult, I know. But I was specifically objecting in it going from committee to committee. If it's coming out of committee, then we ought to consider it as a board at least notional, take the temperature, let the board know what's going on, and then refer it back to a committee. I'm not complaining about things happening in the committee. I am specifically objecting to and suggesting if something goes from one committee to another, that we have a discussion on it. My God, in the amount of time that we've wasted on this, we could have had a discussion on it, but you dig your heels in, and we can't possibly have a discussion at large of something before it goes into my policy committee. It's just, just ridiculous. But it's, it's not.
If, if I could, um, I don't, Mr. Levy's, I'm, it, I'm the chair of the policy committee, and Mr. Levy doesn't even serve on there anymore unless we happen to have an absent member. So it's not Mr. Levy's policy committee, that is, um, also a misrepresentation. Um, uh, it's my understanding possibly that whatever you guys discussed, perhaps the attorney said it was best to go to the policy committee? No, okay, well, let me not assume anything, I don't know why it came to the policy committee. But, uh, we, we should proceed with business and not continue to bicker back and forth, thank you.
Um, Vice Chair, um, having deliberative discussions on items before the board is not bickering. We are supposed to have discussion and debate. And again, my objection is something going from committee to committee, and we should have a discussion. So please don't mischaracterize it as bickering, because our job is to deliberate and debate.
I, I agree with you one hundred percent, I even agree with the not going to committee to committee to an extent. But there are certain words and phrases and, and demeaning comments that are made that have nothing to do with deliberation or debate.
Such as?
Such as when you wipe in your mouth.
No, no, that right there, whenever you just insulted Mr. Levy about his memory in a, in a crude way that should not be done.
No, I was just pointing out that I said five minutes ago.
It should not, sir.
I said that five minutes ago, I specifically stated, that was a comment on Mr. Levy mischaracterizing, intentionally leaving things out.
I think we're out of order and we need to proceed.
Okay, I think we're, everyone's out of order probably, and we're gonna go ahead and proceed, including myself. I'll call myself out of order, um, just so that we can proceed. At any rate, um, if anyone wants to bring something before the board, just let me know six, six days ahead of time, and it'll be brought before the board.
You're up to agenda item four A.
Pardon?
You're up to agenda item four A.
So, so, well, ju- just for clarity, Mr. Chair, I requested two items be added on next Tuesday's agenda. So, I, the, well, the, the possibility. I, I, I know about this contract thing, but what is the other one? The, the second one, which I said just less than five minutes ago, was the, um, the discussion on the directive to make available certain books and publications. I want both of those added to next week's agenda as discussion items. All right, that's fine. I was very clear.
Could I ask for clarification on that one, Mr. Hensley? Are you referring to the discussion by the committee on required books?
Yes.
Um, and those required at certain grade levels, and which, um, which there was a lot of discussion at the committee about that, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, the se- the second item, it's titled, it's titled, it's in, in the minutes of the committee, it's entitled directive to make certain books and publications available. Whereas the proposal was to mandate these ten books and somehow work in the curriculum. Uh, and your position was, we put them in the media centers, and there were, there were differing opinions. I would like to have a discussion among the board members, uh, and then the policy committee, whoever's running it, can thoughtfully consider the remarks of the board members as they carefully craft their well-thought-out and professional policy.
Yes, sir, just want to clarify which one you were asking for that to be discussed.
The second one.
Mr. Levy, and we still have one more committee, um, that needs to say something before we move on.
Yeah, CTE Committee.
Thank you. Now, back on the sixth correction. Back on the 19th of September, we assembled there at Pinecrest High School. Dr. Metcalf gave us a thumbnail overview of the, um, innovative high school concept and the, uh, the application that was going forward. We had some significant discussion about the entrepreneurial nature of the innovative high school. Everybody had some good inputs on that. And that la- this overlaps into my other hat, which is the liaison to the innovative high school. And I'll have more to say about that in the closing comments. That day, the computer science program, uh, person who was programmed to give us a, an overview of their, of their, uh, functions was, was ill. So we quickly, quickly hypored and crossed over to the automotive program, uh, teacher, who was outstanding, Mr. Dunlap, is that correct? Did I? Uh, he, he gave us a great overview. He had a packed house. I, I'm not sure how they crammed so many kids in there. But, uh, he, he was, uh, he had them very productively engaged. I was very impressed with his, his knowledge and his ability to, to connect with these kids. Really impressive. And the next person we visited was Mr. Zapala, who, uh, uh, runs a law and justice class. And he's pretty much in the same, same circumstance. He's got a waiting list of kids to take, to take his courses. So, um, part of the function of the CTE program is to become familiar with these, these various offerings. And this has been a, a, a great way to do that. I was very pleased to, at the, uh, the hosting by Ms. Patterson at Pine, Pinecrest. And this was an outstanding, outstanding, uh, event attended by, uh, Mr. Bill Demastas, who represents the community in this, uh, in a continuing basis on this, this committee. And that's as much as I've got right on that.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Benway, what's that committee you were discussing?
CTE.
That, and, and Mr. Demastas represents the community?
He is a, he's a community representative on that, on that, uh, on that, that committee, yes. We, we have the opportunity to have those.
No, I, I understand that. I just, I was, I was expecting on the CTE, uh, committee that, that, I mean, I know Mr. Demastas. I, but my expectations on a CTE committee would be, uh, business owners of, of, uh, you know, trades, for example, a automotive, you know, the owner of an HVAC company or an owner of a, uh, auto repair, uh, or some sort of trade, owners of tradesmen.
We have, we have an engineer who comes periodically, Mr. Gent. Um, he hasn't come this year yet, but I expect he will be in.
So what trades do you have represented on this?
We have the trucking industry and automotive, automotive repair industry.
Oh, who's, who's, who are they?
Mr. Demastas, who grew up, uh, and was pre- vice president of roadway trucking, owner of 50,000 trucks and 80,000 employees. Um, Mr. Gent has been, um, an entrepreneur, a electrical engineer focusing on signals, on communications. He's also a civil and mechanical engineer. So that, that's what we've got so far. Um, Ms. Kristen Richmond is an entrepreneur, um, who specializes in professionalizing organizations. She's, I, I hired her 25 years ago and she set up the 360-degree, um, leadership program for the 75th Ranger Regiment and the 160th Aviation Regiment. And she's just gone uphill from there. So we've got a pretty good representation, um, great inputs from these people.
Wait, wait, wait. I, I, I know you're satisfied. You put the team together, but, so we have a retired person from the trucking industry who's also vice chair of the Moore County GOP, which is fine. That's fine. Um, we have this person that you hired to, uh, to help innovate, uh, things. I'm just wondering where the, you know, auto repair, the HVAC, the, you know, the jobs that are people around here. I mean, sure, trucking, but you said engineering. What type of engineering, mechanical, civil engineering, no computer science people?
Electronic engineering, civil engineering, mechanical engineering.
Wow, the guy does all three.
Yep.
Wow, okay.
I, I think you also used the term, I don't think you meant to say the term hire. Or we have, we have.
Oh, I didn't mean hire.
No, no, I, I understand. I just want to clarify and make sure that, uh, no, no one misunderstood that. No one's been hired and they, these are, uh, just, uh, people who come in and help us.
The other volunteer people.
I assume, yeah. Just to clarify that. Anything further?
That concludes my.
Any other, uh, any other questions? Okay. So that leaves us with our last item and, uh, let me turn that over to Mr. Holmes.
So, um, I had asked, I think it was at the last business meeting that this agenda to reinstate, uh, David, to his committees, um, be added to the agenda. And it's come to my attention that according to Robert's rules in our bylaws, unless the chair, um, puts you back on or we as a board vote to change.
Our bylaws, is that correct?
Yeah, change the policy.
Yeah, then it has to be as is. So, um, I don't think this has to be a necessary lengthy discussion on. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I will, I will say this. Um, um, first of all, it's odd because you guys voted me off because, uh, this, the, uh, the chair said, I don't want to make that decision. It's a board decision and you guys voted me off. But now all of a sudden you're not willing to vote me on. That's, that's quite the, uh, that's, uh, I don't quite know what to say to that. But that's okay anyway because I'll tell you this, I'm not interested and I'll tell you why I'm not interested. And that is because this is an election year stunt. It is, you know, you guys had me off the boards for a year and a half. A year and a half you've had me off the boards. And, uh, in that year and a half, you've really just been marking time. On the construction, we're right back to where we were five years ago. You know, in construction, uh, SFLA architects, the people who built those schools that were demonstrably 40% more expensive than they should have been, they're the architects. And in charge of that committee is a person who voted, Stacy, I love you, but a person who vote, unknowingly voted for those overpriced schools, right? So the construction committee is right back to where we, you know, we were. The budget committee chair couldn't even answer simple budgetary questions. So it, you know, it's really, it's really unfortunate that under the Levy-Davis regime, uh, board, let's call it that, um, that, you know, they chase stuff like school uniforms, board members challenging books, really rather than really addressing things that I would have ensured were addressed if I'd have been the committee chair. We would have already solved the recruiting and retention problem. Instead, we put Ms. Davis in charge of that, who has no experience. Should put her in charge of the recruiting retention committee or advisory board, no experience in hiring, recruiting or retaining people. So it's really unfortunate that this board marked time in the last 1.5 years. But even if you guys had decided and hadn't pulled this little trick to, oh, well, how are we going to get out of this? Uh, even if you hadn't pulled it, I was going to say no and I'll tell you why. Because we are eight weeks away from a new board, 10 weeks away from a, a new board. And I guarantee you the boards are going to look completely different. I guarantee you there's going to be a different, uh, composition of the boards. And I guarantee you that Steve Johnson is going to want input on who serves on what board. So even if you had guys, I mean, the practical matter is, I came in here today to say, it really, it's more disruptive than, I mean, I could solve, I could take my business experience and the experience, the amazing experience that I've had and help solve some of these problems working together with other members of the community, the county commissioners, people in the central office. But at this point, two months before the board changes, it's just disruptive. I mean, just changing the stationary, you know, of the committees. It's just not worth, it's not worth the time or effort. So I was going to say no anyway. I just kind of decided that on the drive in, but anyway, so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Okay, I have something to say. Yeah, I, I really don't even understand why this was brought up now because it's so close to the election. Um, I, I agree with David. I think that, that what we did was wrong, what I did was wrong. And I have publicly apologized about that. Um, because I think that this board has had a tremendous loss in David's ability for, uh, I mean, come on, he runs a billion-dollar business. Uh, none of us do that. And he, his knowledge and his experience is far above what I could ever contribute, what most of us on the board could ever contribute. So, um, I, I think what I did to him was very unfair. What I did to the board and to the schools and to the community was very unfair.
Further? Anything further by anybody? Okay, I've. I've been insulted and maligned and the like. But what I have to ask myself is, should I respond? Or would my response simply lead to further responses? And would anything I say, even though I disagree with what's been said here vehemently, would that help the children of Moore County?
Mr. Levy, I won't say a word in response. Why don't you respond? I will not say a word in response.
The answer to that is no. So therefore, um, uh, I've chosen to, uh, let this go because I see no value in continuing, uh, discussions because I don't think it helps the children of Moore County at all. Okay. Anything, uh, board, I believe we're up to, uh, board comments. Uh, starting, uh, well, let's, let's, okay. I think I've got a pass by Ms. Caldwell. Uh, Mr. Benway.
Okay. Thank you. Um, standing with the passwords out, thank you very much. The Moore County, Moore County Cooperative Innovative High School will open its doors in late 2025. As such, it is on a fast-track planning cycle. CIHS has the potential to steer the future of Moore County. With the submission of the Cooperative Innovative High School application to DPI this, this month, the joint planners of Moore County Schools and Sand Hills Community College face waiting, waiting planning actions and decisions over the next several months. Our next decisions will translate into brick and mortar, principal and teacher hires, and the opening of doors for the first class of students. We will start architectural planning to see a purpose-built facility on the campus of Sand Hills Community College, whose design is shaped by the demands of the emerging curriculum and the learning end state envisioned. Recent events have brought into question the depth of shared understanding among institutional leadership and among the members of both the Moore County Schools and Sand Hills Community College deliberative boards. At this important juncture, I believe it imperative for both the superintendent and the president of the college to assemble the Moore County School Board and this, the Sand Hills Community College Board of Trustees in joint session, ideally not later than November, to ensure that all share a common understanding of the conceptual approach and all leaving with a unified vision of the end state for the CIHS. This briefing should include statement or modification of initial planning guidance and establishment of in-progress review dates to keep both deliberative bodies adequately informed from here on. We're at an inflection point. We, we depart now from the DPI, um, application process and go full bore into some serious planning. I think this is the perfect time to update both deliberative bodies as a group on the direction we're taking. That's my recommendation, uh, today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Holmes. Um, uh, Mr. Hensley.
Yeah, I just have, I, um, um, I just have something in response to what Mr. Benway said. Uh, it's unfortunate this was a closing statement because this should have been discussed and debated uh, as part of, uh, of his committee report. I mean, a call to action and a closing statement, uh, but it is what it is. I would just add that, uh, I, I fully support this, but there's one very important stakeholder that's left out and that's the county commissioners. Because the county commissioners are going to be expected to write a big check for this. And, uh, so far they haven't been consulted at all, not at all, not at all, formally or certainly not board-to-board. So, uh, if there is a joint session, uh, either, either there needs to be us, the Sand Hills Community College Board and the county commissioners, because remember they're writing the check because 25 million isn't going to cover it. And someone's going to have to go to them and ask them for more money. So we either have, uh, a joint meeting with all three boards, which will be all the stakeholders, uh, except we're leaving out the public. Can't leave out the public, but apparently everyone's cool with leaving out the public. But, uh, if we're going to have a joint session, we need to have it with all three boards or we need to have a separate meeting with the county commissioners because everyone's consulting everyone except who's writing the check. So that's my only thing that I have to say. Thank you.
May I correct one point? Um, my, my request for this, uh, for this, uh, event was from my position, my liaison position to this board, not from my CTE position.
Okay, I stand corrected.
Uh, Ms. Bruna.
Um, okay, first of all, I want to say 17 schools that met or exceeded growth? That's phenomenal. I, I am so proud. And we're 10th out of 115 school districts. You guys are doing a fabulous job. Um, 82% reading at grade level and I think this has nowhere to go but up, up, up because every classroom I have been in that is doing phonics, vocabulary, reading, our teachers are so good, they're excelling. It is absolutely a joy to watch. So teachers, I, I love every one of you. You're phenomenal. Um, I love it that we're going to focus on, on where we were a little weaker, on our math three and on our low-performing schools. And we're going to take a good look at our ACT testing. I am so proud, I, I really am so proud of the job that you guys are doing. Um, I, I think that it's phenomenal. And, um, when, when we have these meetings and I come up with these ideas, I don't want to do anything to the teachers. I don't want to micromanage what you're doing. That, that isn't me at all. It's just, there's so many ways I want to get better and better and better. Um, that, that's all. Um, but I am so proud of what everybody is doing. I really am. Thank you so much.
Dr. Locklear?
Again, I'd thank the board for your engagement and Ms. Davis hit it at the beginning of the meeting. I do appreciate the community, um, and our public and the board, your thoughts and prayers and support in any way you can to our western area of the state of North Carolina. Um, what I'm hearing from our school districts in that area is they're still working through just destructions, still working through identifying, you know, members of their staff and their students and, uh, making sure they're safe. So there's a lot of work to be done and I know we'll be looking for areas to help in the future.
And with respect to, especially with western North Carolina, um, you know, I, I was contacted, in fact, uh, by at least one student family, uh, which came from western North Carolina, which is, uh, uh, coming here, uh, to, uh, to get some schooling. Uh, and all, all our thoughts and prayers, I believe, are with our friends, uh, uh, in western North Carolina. Uh, by the way, um, I, I. are with our friends in western North Carolina. By the way, did I miss, did I miss our vice chair?
You missed me, but it's okay. It's okay. I'm fine. It's all right. I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Okay. And so at any rate, so our thoughts and prayers are with our, our people from western North Carolina. And once again, let me say just one thing. Congratulations to this board. Everybody talks about the board bickering, and my heavens, we certainly do from time to time. But number 10 in the state of North Carolina, what my father would say was somehow this board and the administration and everyone else through everything did something right. So, so I think everyone here is to be congratulated, and I think everyone here is to be proud. Okay, so with that, yes, yes, sir? Oh, yes. Oh, thank you for reminding. Yes. On the, on October 14th, we do have the debate for the, the department of, for the superintendent of the Department of Public Instruction. Once again, it is important to know that it's not costing us any money whatsoever. My hope is, Dr. Locklear, that we'll get some students to go over there and listen to the debate. That certainly, hopefully, the community will get a chance to watch the debate because policy is important. And that's, and who's going to be the next superintendent of Public Instruction will affect Moore County schools. Please, the public needs to remember that if you want to attend the debate, you go to ncforum.org, and there is, there are tickets, which you can get. The tickets are free, okay? But we do need to know how many people are going to be there. So it should be a very exciting debate, and the moderators are very, very, very knowledgeable people. So if you want to have, want to learn a little bit about public education, and once again, making, I think it was pointed out, making public education choice but the best choice, then please attend our debate, okay? Because, and I think it's a great thing that we're going to have that here in Moore County so that our local people can, can see what's happening and maybe learn a little bit about, about, about public education in North Carolina. And also have a good reason to decide on who to vote for. Because it'll be, whether you vote Democrat or Republican, it'll be an important vote. I think we could all say that. Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing? Is there a motion to adjourn? So, okay, finally. Is there a second? Seconds by Ms. Bruno. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? We stand adjourned.